Okay, you're good.
Okay, I make a motion to open this workshop.
Second. Trustee Lanier.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lightfoot.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passed. Let me let you go. Thank you. I just changed my heading.
Okay. Is there anybody who has a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding any of the agenda workshop items this evening?
Matthew, I do not.
I do not. I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Okay, I make a motion that we just go into executive session regarding a continuation of an employee matter. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay.
Discussion.
Okay.
May I ask if this is in regard to a particular employee?
Yes, it is.
And is the employee known to someone or is this an unknown employee?
I'm not even sure I understand. This is just a continuation of a matter that has come before this board before and it'll be a very quick executive session.
My question is related to, so it seems that we're entering executive session under OML 105-1F, which is matters related to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, removal of a particular person or corporation. So I would like to know if it's a single person or is it multiple people?
It's a single person and there were questions or issues raised by other members of this board that we should address in an executive session pursuant to what was discussed previously. I'm not sure what you're getting at. Can you please get Jeff? Because I think he can help straighten this out from a legal standpoint.
Is the thought to do it now because we need our counsel?
We need legal counsel now, yeah. And he's available and it's just to make sure we're getting questions answered properly.
So to the people in the audience, I'm sorry, we have to pay him by the hour. We don't have to pay you guys. We've got to make one of you wait and I'm sorry that it's you.
And it should be quick. It's just, you know, making sure we have questions properly answered.
Here it comes.
Thank you so much, Dorothea. Appreciate that.
She said you could sit in there, but never mind, we need you.
Yeah, we need you. Yeah, a motion was made for us to go into executive session regarding a continuation of an employee matter.
More appropriately, 105-4.
105-4?
Or 5 of the public officer's law. I may have a second.
Okay.
Talks about other things than employee matters.
So it'd be in addition to that employee matter? So it's so amended?
Okay, so motion by Lisa, second by Renee. Are we good to go for roll call? Okay, trustee Lanier.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lightfoot.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Dorothea, I'm going to share my screen on that and put a little notice up that says we're currently in executive session. We'll be back. So if somebody joins the Zoom, they'll be able to see.
Okay, thank you. That's a really good idea. Right.
Never mind, your stuff's on off.
I make a motion that we leave executive session.
Lanier, second. Hold on, court forgot to pay on your pen.
Okay.
Oh, maybe this side. Okay, so sorry. Oh, it's a real call. Trustee Lanier.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lightfoot.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
The motion passed.
Okay, so thanks, everybody, for waiting and also, everybody, for attending this evening. We have a workshop and we have five items that we're going to try to work on this evening. The first one is our vaccination policy and that should be in everybody's packet. If anybody has questions or wants to discuss this and where we're going with it.
Mayor Plummer, we can see additional information shortly from our labor counsel regarding the policy.
Oh, okay.
Statement from President Biden today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't have to get up. You can play up here.
So we have to read all this before?
No, it just continues on with the current events as to what's happening.
There's a gray shaded area that actually I believe our attorney highlighted.
Yes.
Just so, you know, we would kind of see.
Just because he felt it was important to continue.
Yeah, this evidently was a White House press conference regarding, I guess, expansion of their policy for vaccinations. Okay, and I'll, you know, I'll just read a little bit of it just so everybody here can understand what this is about. I'll read the highlighted part. "The expansive rules mandate that all employers with more than 100 workers require them to be vaccinated or test for the virus weekly. This will affect about 80 million Americans and the roughly 17 million workers at health facilities that receive federal Medicare, Medicaid also will have to be fully vaccinated." So I guess, you know, they're really expanding the vaccination policy. So did anybody have any questions about the vaccination drought that was presented to you?
I would. I would jump right on there. I feel, personally, I feel uncomfortable mandating that our employees be vaccinated. I feel that for them to be masked, socially distanced, tested at their own expense and have their temperature taken each time they come into Village Hall, I would feel more comfortable with this mandate, given the number of people that work for the village and our opportunity for social distancing. We also might want to discuss as a board if an employee decides not to be vaccinated, that perhaps something in the way of their benefits as far as health benefits could be adjusted. I know some employees have done that where they have, because.
In what way?
If they get ill, they're saying they make an adjustment in their medical benefits. I don't know what you want to call an incentive, but I've read about it and I need to read more about it before I speak to it, but it was suggested that that would be another opportunity. But generally, for the village to mandate, again, given the number of employees that we have, that vaccination is required, does not feel comfortable for me as far as personal freedoms and, I mean, I'm speaking as a person of state street cancer. So I'm very, very aware of my immune compromised system and it's not about that. It's about person being, decisions being made about my personal, and I'm a vaccine doctor, so it's not that. I just, that's my feeling, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, Renee?
One of the solutions I know that we've talked about in my regular good job was people who either aren't comfortable telling you their vaccination status or are unvaccinated and have the, they're just not allowed in the office and they work remotely. Is that an option for any of our employees?
Not really. We're not quick to handle it. We're a small office being opened. We need staff. It would hinder the DPW because we're looking at everybody.
Right.
So, yeah, it's just, it's an impossible situation. Personally, I'm going to, this is pretty, trustee Lanier, sorry, but because we are small, I think it's even more important because the chance of problems is even greater because you could wipe out the whole staff in a heartbeat and, you know, losing power and phone yesterday was crippling, losing the staff can be even more crippling for 14 days or longer.
So essentially, if, you know, one person, you know, tests positive, we're shut down.
So it's not just about getting sick, it's about the shutdown.
Sure, you know, in other words, consequences of this are not just limited to one person. So essentially, in the office, we would be, and the same thing with DPW. And that has already happened, actually. I've been speaking with other mayors about this and other municipalities and East Rochester had one person test and instantly six other, you know, members of the police force, they were all out, all out, instant.
And was the quarantine?
Because they all were on the same shift.
Right, and was the quarantine requirement or the shutdown requirement different for unvaccinated versus vaccinated?
I don't know, but I'm just saying, you know, the consequences to, I'm talking about consequences of what happens with one person regardless of what it was, you know.
There's an impact because the office shuts down, you have to pay for COVID claims. That means we have the cost with that plus the campaign for people to quarantine. And then there's the personal loss. Let's say you do lose a person, person passes on, that's even, I can't even measure that in numbers. So there's just a trickle down theory that just keeps going and going the more you go look at this. And I'm not sure if we can touch benefits for employees, especially union. Those are all tied up in contracts. You have your employee handbook. We'd have to look at more. We have a whole lot of things to do and I'm not sure as a public employer, we can do that. And we can't pass the cost of testing on according to our labor attorney. That's something we will have to pay for. We also have to pay for the time to go get tested. There was talk of the HR person leading, conducting the testing. So we're adding another layer on ourselves of making sure we're getting proper answers with doing the testing and conducting it properly. It just adds an abundance of issues, you know. It just feels like it's a good first step, given the climate. Yes, my opinion. Which difference?
Well, and, you know, I mean, I think what we're also seeing, and I think that's why our employment attorney sent this document, you know, he's saying, you know, we're not, this isn't isolated just for our municipality. There's, you know, this is coming at the federal level. The state level's now been starting mandates as well. So this isn't something that's going away. I think this is something that everybody's really examining. So, did you have any thoughts? Dan?
Okay, yeah, Steve, I know you wanted to weigh in. I know you've been waiting to do that because you work here.
First off, there are a couple of things wrong with it. Testing is not possible today and testing can be done by an individual for free. Testing can be done by an individual on their own time and provided to this village. Secondly, how can an unvaccinated person hurt any of you? Look at the article they sent around today. There's plenty of scientific proof that says an unvaccinated person cannot affect a vaccinated person any more than a vaccinated person can affect an unvaccinated person. I can understand if you're in close proximity or driving out with people every day that that might make somebody nervous. We're in an office environment here. We are six, eight, 10 feet away from everybody all day long. I don't understand this. You're taking out the civil liberties and the right of a human to control his own life. It's not fair. Not fair in any shape and form because some people are scared, other people aren't. And I don't understand why that can't be an option. It's not mandated federally. It's mandated now by, or executive order for 100, or employees of 100, employees or more, not for local municipalities. It's up to you.
That's why we're discussing it tonight. And, you know, we've talked about this. I mean, I appreciate your opinion. I appreciate your stand and I do think that there's a flip side to that that other people can speak to as well in terms of how we would feel about our personal rights and our personal freedoms as well. So I think, you know, we can all say that there's two sides to this. There's two sides.
They're very right for you to have and not protection, which would mean masking, social distancing and testing, not to cut somebody off from their employment based on a single point mandate. There are options. If those options have supposedly worked for the last 18 months, they should be viable or what you're telling me is those options have not worked and these masks and what we're doing right now does nothing. That's a logical, human and thinking, scientific mind. If you don't believe that, there's something wrong.
No, thank you. And really, again, thanks for weighing in. I, you know, I think the board really recognizes how strongly you feel about this and, you know, we wanted to listen to you. We wanted you to weigh in and you sent that letter around as well. We also have.
I love this job and I love working here, but I will not be forced into something that goes against my religion, my faith and my life.
Well, there's a provision for that in this document. There's a provision for that. It recognizes that.
I hope so. There's options for people.
It does. It does. It does. And actually, frankly, any, I think any of the mandates that I've even read that have come out all recognize those specific components, you know, for potential waiver. I mean, I don't think any, I have never heard of any mandate that is just blanket that would deny anybody, you know, religious beliefs or, you know, for a specific medical reason. I have never heard of anything. I don't know if any of the other board members have either.
Does someone want to read the bullet number six?
Sure, I have it right here. "There are two limited exemptions which the village may consider to grant as reasonable accommodation for employees. Exemption one, medical exemption. If a licensed physician or certified nurse practitioner certifies that the COVID-19 vaccine is detrimental to the individual based on a specific pre-existing health condition, but only until the COVID vaccine is found to no longer be detrimental to the individual's health. Exemption two, religious exemption. If individual holds a genuine and sincere religious belief, practice or observance contrary to the practice of immunization. If an employee requests a religious accommodation and the village is aware of facts that provide an objective basis for questioning either the religious nature or the sincerity of a particular belief, practice or observance, the village may request additional supporting information from the employee. Request for, there's one more bit. Request for accommodation will be considered on a case by case basis."
And I would say that what, you know, trustee Keating just read is actually, for lack of a better way to say it, fairly standard in terms of how most of these mandates have come out. You know, I think mandate is kind of a strong word, but, you know, we want, we have an interest of protecting our employees, our residents. We look at overall public health and safety and that's our responsibility. So we understand both sides, but we have to make sure everyone is protected.
Correct.
You know, and I think we're, you know, I know, we've talked about, there's things we know we can agree on.
I don't, in any way, shape or form wish to, on anyone, ever, anyone, never.
Yeah, so, you know, the other piece of it is that we are dealing with a variant. Right now, we're dealing with the Delta variant and there was something, maybe somebody else has heard about this. There's an additional variant now that has been discovered, Lambda.
Mu.
Pardon me?
Mu.
There's something, yeah, there's a couple of different Greek letters out there, I think. So, you know, what is happening is that some of these are mutating and so, again, this is all about the greater public safety for everybody and how do we best go about this? Yeah.
So I have a question to follow up to Steve's point. Thanks, Dan, for reading that. The, if you, if you are in one of these exemption categories, then where, where does the person who is in that exemption category find what mitigation strategies need to be in place? Is it our airborne infectious disease plan, whatever, that we have in place, our COVID policy? Does it depend on what our rate of infection is to know, like, does that person need to wear a mask then if they're not, if they're not vaccinated?
Well, I think we have a very fundamental, basic policy and right now, if you're in Village Hall, you must wear a mask because we, you know, we all understand there's variants out there. We already have policies in place and that's also part, when you sent that text about the HERO Act, that already was addressed. Dorothea, that plan was put together, when was that? Last spring?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's already been in place and adopted.
Correct.
So really, when, you know, we realized the variant, you know, things were kind of changing a little bit, essentially, we followed the protocols of the HERO Act that were already, that are already in place here at Village Hall. And that's why we're all wearing masks now, we take our temperatures, you know, that's part and parcel of that.
Okay.
Yeah, we follow, as you remember, the plan has a step by step that escalates depending on what's happening with the pandemic. As things throttle down before, we throttle down our response in the office. As things have throttled up again, we have activated again to the employee health checks and the indicators that happen.
So even in that exemption category, there's going to be clear guidance if you're unvaccinated.
If you're unvaccinated.
Even if our cases go down, it may still be, there may be some mitigation.
Correct.
But.
But if an employee, if they get that exemption, they are going to have to be subject to testing and everything.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
So may I clarify? The religious exemption, do you have to provide from a political?
No, for your. Yeah, actually, yeah.
I think.
Yeah.
So it's not just on your.
Right, no, there really has to be, it has to be significant. That's my understanding of it. I've been reading, you know, how this is happening. I've also spoken with rectors of parishes about how, you know, how are they contacted? And I can tell you, in the Episcopal Church, it was a note from the rector or, you know, the head of the diocese, the bishop, you know.
So that potentially an employee could be dismissed based on their vaccination status? That's a bottom line, I was thinking.
There is the potential for that. That's not the only solution. Dorothea, you look like you were going to say something.
Well, I'm, to say, our employees are civil service based. We would have to follow the civil service rules and go through the civil service steps for, you know, it's not a direct dismissal. There would be.
There's nothing like that.
No, it wouldn't be like that. There would be an escalation of disciplinary measures to move it along. And obviously, we're going to give people time to take those steps if the board got so. That would be my approach to the board, you know, let's give them a month, two months to go ahead and get on. But that'll be a board decision. But it is, it's, all employees are civil service, so we would have to follow appropriate steps.
Any other comments on this? Any other action that anybody wants to take on this? I mean, I think, I think it's, I actually think it's a document that protects everybody. If you have religious objections or, you know, the objections that are outlined in this, then you can, you can state your case. In other words.
I have made my three comments already and.
Okay. Under, thank you. Okay, yeah, because we can deal offline with this, but I'm just saying, when I say you, I mean, you, any one, anyone who is not comfortable being vaccinated for what's outlined in here has, there's a remedy for that. And, I mean, I think, I think it's actually a pretty fair document, really. It's not like, oh, there you go, you're out the door. We don't want that. We just want to make sure everybody is protected, you know, and we understand everybody's rights, your rights, but we also understand the rights of anybody else who decides to be vaccinated and, as well.
As I read it, I'm currently, you heard your own commentary.
We have been receiving comments from the public. Some I've answered, but there's one directly, but just really quick over, but there was a, let's see here, kids under 12 can't be vaccinated, they're residents. I think there was concerns this was for the village residents. I'm dressed as if affecting employees only. Someone questioned, is this the purpose of a special meeting? Doesn't discussion belong on a regular scheduled board meeting?
You shouldn't raise the question or ask to be aware of who raised the question. Is that covered?
I can.
It's fair, if they were here, we'd know.
Sure. Kathy K. requested, stated, you know, question about the kids under 12. Marty Edgar's questioned if the purpose of a special meeting, doesn't this discussion belong in the agenda of a regular scheduled board meeting? I explain this is a workshop where the boards work through issues and then send it to a regular meeting.
It's not a special meeting.
Correct. And Kathy K. followed up with, do employees interact with residents? And I answered yes. And then she followed up with this, with the grace of respect, if employees interact with residents and many residents are too young to be vaccinated, then it's relevant. So I'm passing.
The protocol is to always be masked and distanced. That's our protocol. So, period.
Do, we have a comment from Peggy as well. She sent an email. I don't know if she gets it. Her bullet number two.
Yeah, Dorothea has.
Okay, great, okay. Thank you. Caravera's commented, regarding the vaccination policy, it seems the policy compels employees to comply with dismissal. I believe for such a small and close workforce, this mandate is heavy. Masks should be required. Vaccination is highly recommended, especially for those who work indoors. I'm also assuming the votes will probably go back to virtual or hybrid meetings, which will be beneficial for those board members and the public who are especially vulnerable.
Yeah, I think we've addressed some of that. I think that those are all good comments from everybody and thank you for them. I also think that the public should know that the, oops, I'm sorry. Jeez. I think the public should know that as an incentive to any of our employees, if you were to get vaccinated and you would be paid for your time to go get vaccinated, you would get an extra day off, a day of vacation. And we had employees, you know, take us up on that. So, you know, we want to make it a positive experience and just say, you know, please, we're trying to make it as easy as possible for people to do that. So just want to let you know. Yep.
So I guess it comes back to the board. Was there any changes you wanted Christian to review? He, there was a couple of questions that I forwarded on whom I gave you his responses.
So we are not voting on this today, correct?
I, that really is a board decision, but I would think if you're not ready to, we can obviously put it to a regular board.
Yeah, why don't we put it on the Tuesday? You know, because, you know, let's, everybody, we presented everything, we kind of talked through, people have registered thoughts and.
The only, the only comment that I, or the only edit that I had for this was, it's very specific about the first dose. It's not specific about subsequent doses.
It does talk about boosters as well.
It talks about boosters, but doesn't talk about completing the cycle.
Good point, thank you.
So I don't know whether it belongs in there or not. I don't know whether Christian left it out.
Maybe for clarity, though.
So.
So it depends on, you don't need two doses if you get to day to day. So maybe.
Oh, that's true.
You should just say.
You can put language into that.
Whatever the appropriate language is. Okay, good.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good one. Yep. Okay, so we'll put it on the agenda number Tuesday, everybody, and, you know, let's be prepared to take some action.
Okay. Can, if there's any other things you want to add, point out, changes?
Yeah, just float everything back to Dorothea or questions for Christian, too. You know, because we may be thinking about things after that. Okay, so moving on, and it's actually, you know, part and parcel of talking about vaccinations is virtual meetings. I think you all have the language from Governor Hochul. And I guess it's through January 15th?
Yeah.
And I can understand, I think, why they did that because they're going to be back in session in January and then they can figure out, you know, the extension or if needed or what would be appropriate, so.
I would feel better doing these meetings remote.
I would, too.
Yeah, just, you know, everybody weigh in. I mean, this is a workshop. It's just we're talking it through.
We're in the red. All New York is in red, so it seems like the right thing to do, especially since we have a lot of people who like to attend and want to because their, our kids are young and all sorts of, I think our engagement online has, now that we're online, has been up, which is great. I think it's a little easier for people. I think we were talking about the transcription. Right now with the masks, this hybrid version is even more challenging because the transcription can't make its way through our masks and I think it's hard for, you know, some of us to hear and all of that, all of that.
Yeah, Charlie.
Thank you for being concerned, but I do want to point out that I have trouble hearing. I'm not shy about speaking with people. I've had it for a long time, the rhetoric, so I deal with it as best I can. Thank you for hiring the handicap. The other part of this is that we're talking about our board and we have two other boards as well, which are independent boards. And I'm just wondering if we're talking about just our board or are you considering the other boards as well? Because I, my feeling is that they would make their own decision regarding. Because I, my feeling is that they would make their own decision regarding how they feel comfortable moving forward, I know the HPP members have expressed to me that they prefer to meet in person because of the nature of.
Yeah. The visuals.
Yes, of the review, and having plans, and being able to point to things, and it's very cumbersome and difficult on the computer to see what they're trying to do. And sometimes they have to have a large version, which doesn't, doesn't come up.
But, but I, I would think that we would want to give the other two boards that option of either or, you know, because maybe over time, they might like, oh, boy, you know, we're really getting a surge.
Right.
Maybe we need to go in a different direction here, you know.
My question is, are we contemplating allowing the other boards to make their own decision regarding how they're conducting themselves moving forward, or is this across the board?
I, I have no problem with other board, I mean, I think the, the boards, you know, they're independent.
My one concern is that the public may not be comfortable, so does that mean that their choice is either in-person hybrid, or hybrid versus online? Because I think the public still wants to be able to come, and they may not be comfortable. So we want them to get as accessible as possible, so they're choosing to, okay, so.
I mean, that's the intention of anything, yeah. I mean, I would think we would do that. Dorothea, do you want to, or is that too unwieldy for boards?
What are they doing right now, I should know the answer.
Um, I believe they are doing the hybrid, and the planning committee on the HPP. Renee is doing pretty much the same thing right now, I think they didn't start it that way, but they are doing it.
So the board itself could still meet, and the applicants could be, well, it gets tricky because.
It gets tricky.
People who want to come and, and speak on behalf of.
Honestly, no, you're right, yeah. Honestly, if we're going to make a policy, I think we should do it across all the boards. So it's just simplistic, because those boards not meeting, but HPP is meeting, and then planning might not be. It gets a little confusing, it's just easier to say, we're virtual or we're not virtual.
I, I understand where you would like to ask the board's, their opinion.
I want to push back gently on that, because it, it's not a binary decision. It's not virtual or not virtual, there is a hybrid solution.
Correct, there's the hybrid solution, but we're still bringing people into a room.
If they want to.
If they want to.
And, and we have the protocols in place, you know, and also, at, at least at this point, because we have, and, and Pittsburgh actually has for residents 12 and over, we have a 90% vaccination rate in the SIPV. So, you know, I think if there's a, you know, a surge, then okay, then maybe people go completely virtual. Maybe some board members still want to be virtual, and others will, will come in. I know it may be a little more unwieldy, but I think it's a practical matter. It's probably maybe the way to go, you know, give them those options.
The, the other thing that I think is really important in this, because I've been thinking a couple steps ahead, and one of them is if you, if you say this is a hybrid environment, that would mean that, yeah, some people might be in the room, which means then that an office staff member has to be here, or an office staff member sort of has to run the A B. The good news with that is you can kind of just set it up and then go get the distance that you need. I do want to think of the employees here.
Yes and no. We really need to be in the room.
Yeah, you have, you know, note taking and.
There's certain interactions that happen, and so it's better to be in the room for the clerk or the deputy. But honestly, it's whatever the board wants to do. I'm just looking at the easy of someone calls, we can say, yes, it's hybrid, and we're hybrid, it's virtual, one or the other, wherever, but, but I understand, you know, because I, my, my understanding from the HPP especially, they had a hard time doing their applications virtually because of the actors involved with their meetings, so I can understand they want to be in person. So I go both ways in this instance, but my mind always goes to the most easiest answer. Yeah, they're all virtual.
Yeah. Oh, Steve, yep.
I was, I, I won't be real off or announce, only, but HPP is very difficult, wholly involved.
Yeah.
Because you need to have the inter- interaction with that representative to show examples and explain things. Real hard over the Zoom.
Yeah, that's true, especially generally like materials and, yeah.
It just, it just is a lot easier for HPP, you know, I mean, that's up to them, obviously, but as far as the relationship, we're trying to get a decision and go over things in person.
Yeah.
They didn't want that.
I hear that, it's a different type of interaction, really, yeah. It's really what you were saying, Lily, you know.
I think to be really clear, what I'm in favor for is, is making all meetings hybrid. And, and that gives the option to be in the room, and it gives the option to be at home, and.
Wait, I'm a little confused by that, because when we talked about tonight's meeting, and being able to do that, one of the reasons for not doing it is having all of us on Zoom, even though it was advertised as a Zoom, was that the expectation was that we would be here. So if we're saying we're, we're letting each, or we're putting all the, the meetings as hybrid, that means we couldn't go virtual, from what you were saying, must have set the expectation.
I think there was confusion.
Okay.
We, we had been doing hybrid.
No.
But we've been hybrid just with the public.
Yes.
With the, my suggestion, when you suggested that, what I said is, the board should discuss what they want to do. If they want, I mean, be together to discuss whether you want to offload or, you know, be virtual. That was a board decision.
If we needed to go all virtual, you're not proposing that.
Not necessarily.
Just for right now, we can amend it, I mean, you know, just going forward.
And is that something we can decide, like, this, this month or this next two weeks, we're going to do it, given our high transmission rate, and then.
It's a good idea.
I don't know how it works, I want to make sure we're following.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, you know, look, it's a pandemic, the situation is fluid, I mean, you know, maybe we do, you know, hybrid, and, and then it's, geez, you know, we're really kind of getting on the other side of this, maybe we do go more in person. I, I think we can, as we move forward, we can make those decisions, as, as the other boards can as well. We have the capability now to, to do this, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Can I just clarify, when we say hybrid, we mean that all of the board members are here, and the public can either be here or not? Or are we proposing something where some of the board members can be in their houses? I think we're proposing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I actually wanted to pick that up and run with it, I was just getting a pen to write myself a note. That will be a challenge, from a technical standpoint, because you're going to have to have, the people who are at home would be panelists in a moderated forum. And the P, and I'm talking about the trustees, and counsel, and the clerk. Anybody that's sort of on the panel would need to be, so we'd have to kind of have, we'd have to, you don't want to be able to see them on that thing.
Right.
And it, it'd be hard to see them raising their hand and that kind of thing. It just would be hard.
It would.
I would, I would, for this board, I would, I would like to talk about just doing them, having us all be remote for the time being until this thing cools down.
I would support that, I think it's too hard to have some of us at home, and some of us here in that model, so I think we need to decide, are we going to be all, all virtual? So that means then that there, the audience members here, the participants would also be tuning in from home, like, like we were doing this last year, and then leaving it up to the other two boards as to what they want to do.
Do you need to handle?
Yeah, I, I think that the, the model where some of us are hybrid does seem to raise certain problems. I, I think the last time that we talked about that, there was also the issue that if a board member is at home, then the house has to be open to the public, I don't know if that's.
No, because of the, the recent order from the governor, and the, now, we can, we can be remote and vote, and not have the public in. Yeah, that, that's why we're, we're talking about it in this context. Because that was before we went back to in-person, that, that order wasn't placed, the order expired. The legislature went out of session, and then they had a special session to reinstate it, because, as you were saying, the transmission rates are going up again, so.
So just a, a follow-up point on that, I, I agree that that would be an effective model. I think that the remote process we've used in the past does have some limitations as opposed to the in-person meetings. Specifically, people can't see each other, they don't know who's there, and they, they also can't easily interact. I think that there, there is a certain loss going to that kind of model, and I would just, I, I don't have a solution for that right now, but I think that it's something that we should look at so that we're losing less by going to a remote model.
But we're all on camera, all the panelists, we're all on camera.
No, but I think that, this point is that we heard, when we went to the webinar model versus where we were with go-to-meeting, and even initially when we had Zoom, is that you could see, just like I can look out and see everyone who's here, I mean, like Dave can look and see what other villagers are here, you know, we can see it, but we can see it anyway. But I think the issue was, the participants want to see who else is here.
I did.
Who's here, I don't know.
I did turn on the chat session, so I'm hoping that has changed, to allow them to interact with each other.
Okay.
And I did post a comment on there, if there's questions for the board, I'm only looking at the Q and A. For the chat, for me to look at, try to take questions, it's very difficult, so it's easier if it's in the Q and A. So I'm hoping now that you can see each other.
And I think that's how the town was doing it as well, as well, because I remember you spoke with them about.
There was the issue with that, and we didn't want people to feel like.
Yeah.
We were just trying to.
If that's been done, that addresses my concern.
Yep, I made sure it was on for tonight, and made sure the setting was reactivated, so I'm hoping that's the case. If someone was chiming in, let me know, that would be great.
Yeah, how's it going out there? No, and, and, you know, there's not like the perfect solution, we're in a pandemic, we're all trying to handle things as best we can, and, you know, I guess this is really where we're headed for, for now, you know, for now.
So what, where did we land?
Yeah, this is the only we have to vote on, or do we just need?
Yeah, so let me try and summarize.
Okay.
The other, the sub-boards can make their own decisions.
The other two boards?
Yeah. And for the time being, the trustees would like to go back to remote meetings, effective immediately. I mean, effective after this meeting.
Because we're all leaving, yeah. See you guys, turn off the lights.
Until such a point we decide that it's safe again in that kind of.
The board, I think, goes virtual, the entire board, this board. Not a case of, when you said hybrid, I was picturing that some of us would decide to be here, and some of us would decide to be.
That would be hybrid, but we're, what, what Dan is proposing is, let's just go virtual for now. We are in an elevated transmission, we are in a red zone. For now, we can always amend that, you know. I, I, I'm in agreement with whatever the board wants to do, I'm, I'm fine with it.
No, that doesn't mean you can't be in your office while it's going on.
Of course, I, I'm so aware of that, absolutely, of course, of course.
Like what we did last year, too, sometimes if you don't have it set up at home and you want to be here, we can separate.
Yeah.
But everyone's on their screen.
And so, you know, maybe for now, that's the way we, we go as a board, and the other boards, as Dan said, would. Okay, so. Figure it out.
We would just not be set up with a camera or anything, so when you say hybrid, what it means is that the public is always on their computer or their phone, they're never here.
We're, we're not saying hybrid anymore.
Oh, you're not saying hybrid?
We're saying 100% remote.
Okay.
For us.
For our board only. For our board only, and then the other boards will nail their decisions relative to what they feel they need.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'll do the, what the majority feel, I don't mind being here. I, I.
I do, I do, I don't like sitting in a room where I know that there are people in the room who are not vaccinated.
Okay. Okay, so. I'm, I'm fine going virtual, you know, remote, I'm fine with that.
We just have a comment from the public who voted in. So if hybrid is a strong possibility going forward, then I recommend that the board be both a hybrid approach proactively, it was problematic when the board transitioned to remote meetings without proper preparation.
I'm not.
I'm not.
We did have some votes, I mean, we had another board, I think that's a good.
I, I, I'm the first to have said I'm not a tough person, and I don't take in all the help, and will continue to take help from the public and the board.
Sure, yeah, we've, we've had wonderful help from.
Yeah, if we had a hybrid approach with some people at home, this is where the discussion of having the TV, where they could appear and people could see them, would be important, which we didn't want to jump into quite yet, so.
The challenge is, this is a very noisy room.
It is.
And, no, it is the creaks that all get picked up, it echoes, it's very hard to be remote and hear.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, it's always been an issue, actually, is the acoustics in here, you know.
It's not carpeted.
Well, if we had a quieter, it would solve the problem.
And we did have a response to my question about, you know, we see each other, they said, I don't think trustee like this concern about virtual meetings is addressed, the board cannot see who is there here unless they ask a question to speak.
I think that's what we're, you said you had a worker who had to.
Well, I allowed the chat function, so I assumed.
So we would have to announce who was, we'd have to have everyone say who they were or something, but there's no other way to do a roll call?
I guess we could start up the meeting, but if you get 30 people in your attendance, I don't think you want to do that.
No, you don't.
Yeah.
The way we did it before worked really well.
Yeah, I thought it worked.
The panelists were on camera, when somebody wanted to speak, they get put on camera, and now everybody can see who's in the meeting based on chat. They can't see a picture of everybody else, but they can see a picture.
Yeah, and they know who's, everybody's chatting with.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're saying the chat window will show everyone.
Yeah.
Who they are to the, the public, yeah, now that it's back on, so it was turned off when we were doing the webinar.
Right, it was turned off when you did the webinar.
Okay, and then you see everybody as a participant, not just as.
Yeah, I'm hoping you can now with the chat, I.
We can test that.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
And then the host mode, I'm in control, no. But I can't see that, because of the screen I have, doesn't allow me to see.
So we can test that on.
I'll just go test it right now.
Yeah.
You're going to go test it?
Yeah. Be right back.
Sorry, Brooklyn and the dress.
Brooklyn is on, he is in the attendees, and maybe Brooklyn can be involved.
Oh, yeah.
Brooklyn's in there, I assume he can see everyone.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, and I, you know, I know that these things take time to work out, too, so I don't need to under-resolve right now.
It's a valid, a valid concern.
We've come along a little bit, you know, I think it's gotten better.
Sure, sure.
We figured out, I think the masks are tough, though.
They are.
Hearing.
Knock on wood, I think we figured out the sound.
I, I think we've found, just wanted to.
Oh, yeah, Art, excuse me.
So, bear with me, so I, I understand the question and answer as far as the webinar versus the seminar versus the webinar, and I'm assuming that we've got the rule of the government.
We're doing Zoom right now, we were using.
Go to, go to meeting.
For most of the year.
Yeah, so whatever is a valid answer, so it seemed that there is one format, that it wasn't allowed, or something, which is the other, one allows the public to know who else in the public is speaking. It's your president, right? And if I heard correctly, and I'm sure it's meant to work, so now moving forward, all public hearings or work sessions, all of this time we worked out, I would know that David is at home, obviously, you don't find him at home, and you can see what the specific question and comments are. That, that's great, because I know there was a challenge before, and we've got a requirement in evidence, and when it restricts the public forum, I can speak, but I don't know what else is out there in the air, which is a special investigation, and I, thank you very much for working through that.
No problem.
One, it's Dorothea, two, the, there is no, right now it's not working that way.
Okay, we don't have to talk, yeah.
Your intent is we're working on it.
Yeah, we're, we're working on it.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll get it fixed. You can only, you can only chat to the panelists, you can't chat, you can't see who the other participants are.
Yeah, that's what we need to figure.
So we'll solve that, that's a solvable problem.
I'll keep flipping switches.
Okay, so, so Dan, Dan has made the suggestion, and Renee has, I feel the same sentiment, that going forward, we would, we would go to remote with the chat. Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with that at this point, I mean, I, I, I am aware, as we all are, that there's a surge. You know, so.
So can we put that to a vote?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make, I'll propose that for, for effective September 10, Board of Trustees meetings, regularly scheduled meetings, workshop meetings, or one of the other ones, executive sessions, all meetings involving trustees will be remote via Zoom.
May we just amend that to, to say that the goal is to work towards a, a place where the public can see each other and chat as, as possible by this technology?
See each other and/or chat. It, because, and let me tell you why, because it may be very possible for them to see each other on a chat list, but still only have the, the five or six or seven people on video. And you promote them when it, when it's time to do that, do you see what I mean?
Yep.
Because otherwise, you've got 25 tiles on this page, and 25 on the next page, you can't really see.
I think your intent is that they can see who's there.
Right, yes. Right, yes.
So maybe that's the amendment, to the best of our technical capabilities, that we try to accommodate the public in a way that they can interact, you know, see each other, how's that?
And additionally, someone, I'm sorry, who's presenting to the board.
Yes.
Would also be visible to the board, to the body voice.
Now, we can bring them forward.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Yeah, I got that now.
Okay, so there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll pick it. Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Lightbin.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lantier.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, respectfully, I would request that we consider changing the agenda to push up our public comment workshop session, since it's gotten to be eight o'clock and we haven't addressed it yet, which was the original intent of the meeting, that when we talk about the retainer agreement at the end, and get into the workshop that we had advertised, and the suggestions up to the board.
Sure, let's do it.
Yes, we're good. Okay, so we're gonna just hold off on the retainer agreement and go to public comment?
I don't know.
Oh. Thank you, have a good evening.
So this is the public comment policy, to be clear.
Oh, thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you, thanks so much, Brooklyn.
To be clear, this is the public comment policy, right?
What's going on, sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Public comment policy.
Okay, I didn't see, maybe you could, no, no, sorry, I just didn't look into the topic. I have requested a copy of the town's, the board and town handles on their meeting. I thought it seemed like a reasonable format, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention.
Yep, it's in there.
It's in there, it went in, I think, a little bit later, because I'm sure everybody's aware by now, we had a pretty significant power outage yesterday, and in addition to that, we had a flood in our basement, so it was kind of an exciting day, filled with drama. So, you know, Dorothea, really, thank you, Dorothea, for honchoing everything and pulling it together in spite of the circumstances.
To address them. Okay, you said it was, the town policy was in there, right here, prior to the power outage. What wasn't in there, what you passed on was their agenda, where shows where they put their public comment towards each other.
Oh, that's what came in later, yeah.
That's what came out later.
Very big.
It did, it's been very big, I have no problem reading this map.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Does that ever gonna have, have it in the normal, get on their computers on the?
No, it's just as big as that and ours too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good, so we know.
I'd like all of our packets to be that big, so I can see if I can keep my computer screen that big.
So, if I'm understanding, then in the packet, it was the public comment policy that went back to 2014, and then there were additional amendments that went through 2016 and 17, and then I think it's 19.
Yep.
So we're essentially looking at a policy that has been in place for about seven years, and now just looking at how you want to tweak it, or what needs to be done.
Can I ask for a clarification of that? When I looked in the minutes, I didn't find any place that the board had actually voted and approved that policy. Rather, it was, I'm gonna specifically state the 2016, I believe it was, it was a budget meeting. My reflection is based on the fact that I was running the meeting, and so, and you were on the board, and it was a lot of discussion. We've got a bunch, we have a full, packed audience, and the attorney suggested that we read aloud the New York guidelines for meetings. And that is how we opened the meeting, and so we said, these are the guidelines for public speaking. And the reason we did that is because there were so many people, we wanted to make sure they had an opportunity to speak. And so it wasn't a policy that the board adopted, it was just something that was read out into the minutes at the beginning of the meeting. It wasn't, let's vote on accepting this, so we never did adopt it as a policy. It was something that we, we did here in New York State, and Dorothea looked it up, and we used it as our guideline.
So maybe it wasn't formally adopted, but it certainly was de facto used, and there also is in records going back from October 2014 of having public comment. There also, something was adopted de facto, because over the years, you were amending something, maybe you never formally adopted it, but you certainly implemented something perhaps as a policy. So it may not be reflected in minutes, but you certainly, through the actions of the board, meeting after meeting, it was, in essence, de facto adopted, so I think we can speak to that, or we can speak to how we want to move forward this evening.
You don't need to, I just wanted to, for now that we don't really have a formal, we don't have a policy that we have adopted yet, but that's what we're talking about.
We understand that, but we certainly have something that has been read prior to every single meeting, is my understanding, for a number of years.
It was read, it's been around, it was posted in the room.
Yeah.
We had it on the back of the agendas during.
Guidelines for public speaking.
For public speaking. I think it actually went hand in hand, and we tried to do the public comment initially about the public to speak, beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
And then we ceased that, but we've had this policy around. The board has amended it and requested changes, I think the last time, Danny, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think you had suggested the last time, I think that was the 2019 change, you wanted some public change. It seemed to recall from a meeting.
So we want to formalize it, is it what we're saying? Yeah, I mean, well, you guys wanted this in a workshop, and I think that's great, and so let's, let's move on, let's talk about it, yeah.
I want to comment about what the agenda that Lily included, because what I, I like very clear expectations for the board, for when they're going to entertain comments, and I think it's helpful for the public to know when they're going to be allowed to comment, so that they can be prepared when they come to meetings, and so what I like about the town policy, or town agenda, I'm sorry, not policy, is that it lays out, you can see, here is agenda item one, and, and it shows when the public discussion will be on that particular agenda item, public comment, I mean. And this is not, I know there's been some confusion, Art, when you were talking about hearings, we're talking about just general, general meetings. So when there's a topic, whether it's, you know, we're voting on it or not, if there's an agenda item, and we need to make some sort of decision, or there's a discussion, I do like to hear from the public, I think everyone does. So I like that the town has said agenda item, and then you get to comment as a member of the public on that agenda item, not just whatever you want. And then, there's also a general comment period, because we know there are times, some people can't come to meet, can't come to, they don't use email, they don't know how to call village hall, they feel, you know, they want to bring up something that's not on the agenda, and so we have a period where they can, whether that's at the beginning, or the end, it doesn't matter, but just, there's a, you can comment during an agenda, or, you know, on an agenda item at that time, and then another general comment.
And that was, the town does it at the end, is that the one that I saw?
Yeah, the town does it, the town that says public comment at the end.
Yeah, okay.
Can I get some clarification on what you just said? So, are you proposing then that with each agenda item, there is a public comment period?
Yeah.
Okay.
I am, because, and, and this is.
And then another one at the end.
And another one at the end, and I also believe there should be some sort of guidelines on timing, and I don't think it should be open, because I think it, that gets too tricky, because if we have to decide, oh, there are a lot of people here tonight, and we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna shorten the time, that can be seen as, well, why are you shortening the time tonight and not another night, and I don't want it to be seen as.
Well, I've researched, if I may just add, I've researched in other municipalities and also lived in them, and I can tell you, one of the municipalities I lived in, they would have it at the end, but you could sign up beforehand, so they would always have, I think, I'm trying to remember, I believe it was either five, I think it was five people or seven at the end for that open comment, and then typically what people would do, they'd sign up and say, you know, I want to talk about short-term rental housing, you know, so then, that was helpful also for the board, like, oh, okay, you know, now we're kind of getting a little bit of where you're going with the topic. And you would just be queued, you know, for whatever meeting, they would, you know, they would let you know, yep, you're on the agenda, and we're gonna listen to you at the end, and thank you for your topic, and let's go. So, I mean, that's, and a number, I would say, of the four municipalities I lived in, they all actually had something like that, so.
And not have comments on agenda items themselves?
Oh, some did, no, actually, some did, some didn't, I think it depended, I wouldn't say, Hollywood, I don't, Hollywood didn't, I think they, they didn't. They took comments, they took comments at the end, I mean, public hearings are different, obviously, because then everybody, you know, it's for the public.
We give people as much opportunity to participate, but I also, like, I think, same, you know, you've got 10 minutes to talk, it's unreasonable, and I think it gets too tricky for someone, and it'll end up being you, or someone watching the clock, to say, oh, today we're only giving you four minutes, let's be clear.
Well, I think we've always been, we have, we have the limit, we have the minutes.
We were saying three minutes.
It's always three minutes.
And I'm open to, I'm open to other timeframes, I just think we need to have a limit on it for expectations, I think it makes people prepare. You know, I go to lots of public meetings, and I normally have three minutes, and I think about what I'm gonna say, and if I need to provide more, I give them the packet of statistics and whatever else, but, so I'm open to whatever time limit, I just think we need to have it in several areas, several places.
Well, you know, you did include, remember the research that you did with other?
Yep, I just glanced at it, some of them, like, limit, if they don't get much.
The other tiny, yeah.
Three and five minutes seems to be much of a standard.
I mean, yeah.
There's two, three, two, five.
I say three.
I agree, standard, but I'm open to hearing others.
These meetings are super long, you don't need anything to make them longer.
Personally, I feel that we are here to hear from the public, and I have several comments about the guidelines. I guess, first of all, just a point of clarification, when I was looking through the minutes, I believe we did adopt, I found the minutes from April 4th, I'm sorry, April 12th, 2016, we adopted the guidelines that are substantially the same as what we're using today. It seems like one point was added to those over the years perhaps, but anyone can look those up in the minutes. They were adopted, and I think it's important to note that they're listed as guidelines, both here, as they came from NICOH and in the current NICOH rules. So I think that, you know, to talk about this as a policy is, really, this is a general guideline for public comment, as the title, as the title was stated. And there is some flexibility, I think that personally, my preference would be that the meetings are quite open, I think that, given the small size of our municipality, we can afford the time to generally allow people to speak at the beginning, at the end, and on agenda items. The, as far as the length of time, the NICOH guidelines that I requested that we add to this packet, and I appreciate, Dorothea, that you added those, I think they're very helpful in that they specifically state that the amount of time can be allowed to individual speakers can be based on the number of speakers present. And as with the meeting tonight, we've got four people in the room, some other amount of people online, but it's generally less than 10 people in attendance. And usually, not all of those are listening to speak. So I think that, you know, we want to be transparent, we want to be able to tell people what they should expect to speak for, and we want to have some expectations in place for somebody who goes way, way over that. But I, you know, personally, I would say, well, then let's say that if there are less than a dozen people present, then we can go to a longer amount of time, and if it's.
Short on a case-by-case basis.
I think that there's more room for that, especially based on the small size of our municipality.
So even if we have the three minutes in the guidelines, we don't have to adhere to it because of the prep, that's what I mean.
I believe that's up to you.
I still, I still agree with Renee, you know, like, three minutes or, you know, something, so we at least have a little starting point there.
I want to, can I jump in and address something, I agree with everything you said, Justin, there's one minor change I want to make, though. You said that the public could speak at the beginning, during the, at the beginning of the meeting, during the agenda items, and at the end. I don't agree that the public should speak at the beginning of the meeting, we have an agenda, and it's, and they can speak about those things that are agenda items during that agenda item, and they can also speak about general things at the end. I don't think there needs to be another period at the beginning, because I think, quite frankly, that would derail the agenda. We'd start conversing with them, we'd skip ahead to something that we were going to cover in two hours, that sort of thing. There is a time, there's a structured agenda for a reason, and we should adhere to that. The other thing that I want to point out is the public has all kinds of channels with which to engage us, social media, email, phone.
Office hours.
Office hours.
You block them on social media.
Say again?
I said you blocked me on social media, so I can't communicate with you, as a trustee, and supposed to represent the board.
That is exactly right, would you like, I'll absolutely tell you why, you've been physically threatening to me and my family, so of course.
Okay, let's get, let's get back to the agenda, please. My call order, we're going back to the agenda, please, thank you.
The Village website, I mean, the Village Facebook page is another way that people can reach out, I'm assuming that Marina checks the messages for them, or no? We may need to add that to the, doesn't seem like.
I don't think we get messages through the Facebook.
No, we don't, we don't allow them.
Yeah, I think it's just more.
More messages individually.
Information on what's going on, like, yesterday.
People can comment on a post, though.
Yes.
They can absolutely comment.
Yeah, they can comment, yes, I'll finish up, and then I'm gonna recognize Dave, give me one second.
Oh, I was, I mean, we keep talking about, well, that it's making the meeting long for the trustees, it's actually, the thing I like about time limits, but giving everyone, or and giving everyone ample opportunity during the meeting, during the agenda items, and another period to comment. What I like about the time limit is that it's also respecting the people who come to our meetings, because not everyone has three hours to sit in a meeting, and so the three minutes, I feel like is respectful to people, and.
Everybody can say their piece.
Yeah, we knew what we were getting into.
Yeah.
At least most of us did, that we were going to be in pretty long meetings when we ran for office, so it's not about cost necessarily, it's about accessibility.
Excuse me, Dave, yeah.
David Ferbus, 2700, I'll keep it short, I'm looking at the policy the town has adopted, the guidelines, I recommend we adopt the same thing, it's very simple, straightforward, I think we can try it. I agree with trustee Keating, not to have comments at the beginning, the town did away with it also, it does get you on track, so you go with agenda items. After an agenda item is discussed, the public can counter, I experienced at meetings, as people will say, I don't have any comments, or I've been covered, where you ask someone, do you have something to add, there's three ways to run a meeting that manage that. The other comments at the end, public comments should be open, again, that's an area that you can control, that's something that's urgent, you can ask somebody, can we do that offline, can we bring it up later? One thing they do have in their policy, and I strongly endorse, is they do read in submitted letters, get the meeting by the correct, set a limit, we've done that in the past, two minutes. If it's a 10-minute letter, we'll read two minutes of it, attach it, but this is very simple, straightforward, it works. We're in a municipality of 1,500 people, smallest in the county, if we can't run a meeting, the town could do it with 30,000, all the other municipalities, we could do this too. And I think the public will abuse it, I think it's a matter of common sense, if there's three people that talk, and they run 30 seconds over, maybe they have something to add, but to need to allow the comments of the agenda items to go on, I have a comment to make on a later item, I think it would be constructive, I'll talk to you later. But I endorse this, it's very simple, and Pittsburgh residents will understand both municipalities following similar procedures.
That's a really good point.
Towards each other, so those are my comments, so thank you.
No, thank you.
Can I say, I have a question for you, okay, what is your opinion on, are all agenda items the same? Now, I don't know the answer to this, and maybe this is also a question for the board, so there are definitely things that we vote on, and then there are things that we don't, you know, just updates from the DPW, that kind of thing, comment on every agenda item, or just the moment before we vote.
I used to ask them for any comments, and then, when Dave thinks there won't be any, I think that's the way they'll come out, but maybe someone will have an insight, or they'll comment on something that adds value before you vote, I think it's a matter of energy, and frankly, in any organization, you know, public body, school board, village towns, whatever it is, there's always head flies, we know that, there's always people who are outliers, and if they come and speak 20 times, the public gets tired of it, the board gets tired of it, and eventually, you know, you kind of know what's going to come, where you tell the person, could you sum up? Or could you submit that, there's ways to handle that, I think with common sense and respect, and have the audience have respect for speakers too, so, I think it's dual. It's very simple and straightforward.
Yeah, no, thank you, Dave, you know, and I also think you make a good point too, you know, when you have a number of comments on the same topic, sometimes people say, oh, you know what, that kind of was covered, you know, you know, because it's interactive. oh, you know what, that kind of was covered, you know, because it's interactive with the community. So I think, I think that's also a very good point. Thank you. Yes, Art, yes.
Hi, yes, Art Perez, 7 State Street. Once again, thank you also for the appearance of the world. You have a purity for you. First of all, thanks, Justin and Renee, for all your points well spoken and well stated, as well as reiterated by David as far as transparency, public phone, the importance of the value that adds to the community, and allows other folks within the public to see if they're not here or not. So what's critical, and one of the comments made by the board and questions about the whole thing with, it's a public forum, we're social media. I'm not on social media. There's a lot of people out there, whatever age you are, whatever profession, whatever you do. The whole intent is a public, open, transparent forum. That's where the value of this is. So I respect and appreciate, and I think it's going to help you, it's going to help the community, if whether the general comment for any subject is at the beginning or end, that's fine. It's critical for everybody, once again, and an application, because we do not know all the details which may come up during the presentation by an applicant, and/or the board raises, that the public may have input one way or another. The other thing I might, reading through some of the drafts, I, there's a concern that that, the public cannot question one of the board members on their statement, whether it be a correction, a misstatement, or misunderstanding, or a misclarification. I think the public should have the right to respond to that correctly, not just to the board in general. This is not a me versus you sort of thing. It's more, if any of the board members misspoke intentionally or unintentionally, I have the right as a citizen to clarify that point. I think that's a basic respect. As far as the other thing, David, to be mentioned to, unspoken 30,000 towns in Pittsburgh, by 1,500 villages in Pittsburgh, 5%, whatever, you know, whatever small percentage we are, they seem to have meetings well run, with all of the ones we just spoke about, and whether, again, ten people in a room, three minutes of it sat, that's a half hour. The other major thing I ask, though, that the board take into consideration, based on what was suggested too, about items that maybe the public is interested in but won't comment in, budgetary things, et cetera, that all be administrative, be pushed at the end of the meeting. I mean, all the respect, we spent two hours up here listening to other matters, which are very important, vaccination, HR matters, but if the public wants to sit around for it, that's fine. But I think in general, the public wants to hear if they're tuning in on a particular application, how that affects them specifically. So I ask that, they'll just go first, short of something critical being out there with the budget that they are, they're going to have a $20,000 budget, they might know about that, versus DPW issues, et cetera. Not that it's not important, but get that at the end, or outside the administrative meeting, that's where my thoughts on that goes. Here again, and Mr. Keating has, trustee Keating also said, we appreciate when you said that, you know, you apologized to Jay Lee, when your executive, our times, and workers, sort of thing. But here again, exactly, that reiterates, underlines the fact that we come here, wait around, you have your business, but is it critical to the public's agenda? I mean, I could sit at home, and this is more important than being a person for an application, and it much.
Thanks, Art.
If we go over a bit, sort of thing, don't cut somebody off. That's my request. I think that's a basic courtesy thing, short of you having a stopwatch with an alarm going off. It gives the opportunity of somebody to just, I've got 10, 15 seconds. Thank you.
Thanks. You know, I would like to speak to, you know, like DPW reports and things like that going at the end of a meeting. I do want to just let the public know that, I'll use DPW as the example. By the time they come to a meeting to do the report, they have already probably put in, you know, like a 12 or even 14-hour day, depending, and then you have to get up at 5:00 again in the next morning. So, you know, we try to balance that, because we know that we have, we have a crew, DPW people or whatever, or even office staff as well. These are extraordinarily long days.
And that's very well pointed, and I respect that. So those are maybe one of the 20, you know, administrative matters, something big. That I understand totally. The other option is to hold another meeting for that kind of matter, you know, administrative matters on another night, where the public is probably not, of the 100 people that are like, listening tonight, sort of thing, I'm going to tend to be interested in that kind of other night, especially in the version.
No, I appreciate that.
We had talked about an idea around that, and I don't know whether we can do this or not. This was a half-baked idea, and I kind of liked it, which was, one meeting a month, that we always cover the administrative stuff, and then another, and whatever important topics we have. And then the next meeting, for the second meeting in a month, you don't cover those administrative things. If possible, you cover the emergency things. But do we need two building inspector updates a month, or could we do with one plus any special items? I don't know. It's certainly worth looking at.
I wanted, I see Dorothea's over there. You've got some thoughts on this, and I suddenly.
I just want to inform the board and the public, we currently are doing that. The DPW and the bill inspector come to the first meeting of the month. The second meeting, you do get the bill pays, because we have to pay bills. So, and the attorney is always on there.
Okay.
Outside of that, we do try to handle the employee reports at one meeting a month.
Okay.
We are essentially doing that right now.
Yes, Bob.
My comments will be brief, because I think Dave has covered most of what I wanted to say, and I would like to commend the board for your discussion tonight, and taking our comments under consideration. I wanted to say I agree with Renee's comments and Justin's comments. I'd also like to validate what Lily said. We had the guidelines when I was mayor during my 20 years, but we always had an open meeting policy, because in the many sessions I attended with NICO training sessions, the whole purpose of villages, the reason why villages continue to be incorporated in the United States, is to give village residents a voice and access to government on immediate issues that most affect them. That's the whole purpose of village government. During my administration of 28 years, during my predecessor of Jack Folsworth, and before him, Dave Shepard, meetings were open and informal, and was a very workable forum. The guidelines really were only necessary when we had something controversial like the moratorium a few years ago, or anything to do with 75 in the world. So I like the discussion tonight. I think it's important to have residents to be able to comment on each agenda item as it comes up. It looks like that's the way you're going, so I'm going to not read my other comments tonight, and commend the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
Good.
Oh, yeah, okay. Sort of one of those. Yeah, John, come on up.
Tom Lubek, 60th State Street. And again, Dave, Art, and Bob have all given good comments. And I fully support having the residents be able to make comments at each individual agenda item, because so many times, you know, questions come up as a result of the discussion. You give the opportunity. I know running planning board meetings for the town, I've asked people that, you know, we've got 10 people that want to make the same comment, you know, let's let one person make the point, and you can respectfully control how people do that. And, you know, again, depending on what the topics are, you know, how many people are here, you can go over a three-minute, and somebody, you know, some people aren't comfortable, you know, getting up, talking, and it's going to take a few minutes to get to where they need to be. So I think anything we can do to make the people feel like their opinion matters, you know, maybe they just have something to say, and they want to get it out their chest. So anything you guys can do to make that happen, I think it's just going to make you more welcomed by the public, and people are going to give you good comments. So, thank you.
Thanks, John. John, I'd like to say something. I've seen you in action at the town, running those meetings, and I know, remember the whole cell tower. You were awesome. You did a great job. That was a really tough, tough issue. Any other?
I just had a few other points. It seems, my understanding is that in the, in the packet, we have two sets, we have guidelines for public comment, and then we have guidelines for public comment during public meetings. And I don't understand where the second one came from, if that's a proposal. I don't know if anybody could establish that before I, I missed a couple of them.
We had two versions. One was.
One's NICO.
One was, the original one was the proposed.
Yeah, I think she just wanted to put everything in that the board had kind of looked at over time, and.
So if we can call the second one the one that's proposed, because I do see that the first one, the guidelines for public comment are substantially the same as the April 12th, 2016, once we're adopted with the exempted item. The second one, and I think this relates to some of the public comments as well, we, one of my questions on that is that it seems, it indicates that you can only comment on items on the agenda. And I would, my opinion is that you should not enforce that, because I think it's very valuable to the public to comment on anything, and especially.
They can at the end of the meeting. That, we'd already discussed that, I thought. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I mean, I thought we, I'm only saying.
If we're on the same page with that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Because we were all talking about like the town, and town's policy, and that's what they do.
Yeah. Do you have the town's policy?
Yeah.
Do you have the town's policy?
It should be in, it's a good one. Are we considering, are we amending this, or are we coming up with an entirely new one? Are we, okay.
I don't know what we're doing, exactly. And so I think that whatever we're doing, I just want to make sure that it's open to the public to comment on whatever they want to comment on.
Yeah, I thought that was.
Okay, thank you.
Just us, so.
Can I ask that the members of the audience please silence their cell phones? The person who's tapping on it, it's making a clicking sound?
I was picking it up.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
The, if I may continue for a second. So I'm glad that we're on the same page about that one. There's another item here that says must step to front of the room. To me, it seems that that may not be necessary, and it might be exclusive if some people aren't able to step to the front of the room.
Must step to the front of the room if payable?
I actually don't, why can't they just stand up where they are?
I don't know.
You get such a small room. I agree with you there. I never liked this one. I had to come up and give comments. It's a little intimidating. I don't know, maybe, maybe it's.
Well, there's also, there's also a hearing issue for us.
Usually if there's a microphone.
So somebody right there is ideal.
And there's a microphone there.
Okay.
You know, and that way, everybody in the room can hear the person. I mean, that was the intention, I believe.
Okay.
You know, so.
As a person taking the minutes, I really like that part.
Okay.
Because I really can then identify who's speaking out there. I can't, and a lot of our residents are like, this group I know. They think I know them, even though I've seen them 20 times, and I apologize, probably don't.
That's intended.
It's, yes, I.
Especially with a mask in, right?
Yeah. You know, John, you don't look like yourself. You look like Frank Sinatra. Okay. So anyway, it just really helps the note taker, if the person steps forward.
Sure. I think, as long as we're making reasonable concessions for people when they're meeting difficulties.
Yeah, I think that's always been done.
The, sure. The other point that I wanted to raise, which I think is also related to some of the public comments, is that this does seem to segue into some of the other NICO meeting policies, including one that indicates that the written public comments are not just part of the record, but they're a part of the minutes. And I think that if we're, to me, the NICO policies that Dorothea kindly included in the packet really balance each other. If you're imposing restrictions in one place, they ensure that we're being open and recording comments in another. So I think that in previous meetings that I've been on, we've added emailed comments to the public records. They're foilable, but I would really prefer that they be added to the minutes of the meeting, as part of this change in terms of public comment.
I'm going to kindly decline, and the minutes are the clerk's view of what happened at the meeting. I'm happy to attach them to the agenda. I'm happy, I mean, the minutes, but I'm not going to insert them into the minutes.
Yeah, no, I think that's what he's saying, attach.
That way would be fine.
Yeah, yeah.
I can attach, I'm not going to contest that. It just creates a nightmare. And also when people speak, I would love to record every word out of everybody's mouth. I'm not going to do that either. You're not meant to be verbatim. So I'm going to take the point they're trying to make, and I'm going to record that.
Yeah, my, I was not saying verbatim in the minutes when they occurred. I think that emailed comments or comments to the chat could be included as an addendum to that.
Yeah, I would like that too, because we are saying, comment, comment, or submit your email, yet the only ones that appear in the.
Yeah, they currently, they're in, when I receive, like, here, and I will go to the written comments we received on this topic, and through the computer, they go filed right into the meeting folder.
Well, hold on one minute, pause for one minute. So the question is, when the, when the meeting minutes are typed up?
Correct.
Into a single document?
Correct.
And it's saved as a PDF?
I can attach it to the PDF.
Yeah.
And it will be one document?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So when we look at it a year later, and you can, you click on it electronically, and it brings up all the comments that were in the meeting, and also the ones submitted. And we also have, to this point, the, now that we're going back virtual, what happens to all the comments that are in, is that attached?
Well, now.
Addendum as well, or?
That's going to be a board decision. But currently, what I've been doing is downloading the Q and A, and I put it into the meeting folder.
Okay.
And I will do, even though the chat, we're not addressing anything that happens with the public chat, I will download that as well, and put it into the meeting folder. So all, all activity related to the meeting goes into the meeting folder.
So you're doing that anyway?
It's captured.
Yeah, I hear you're going with it. It's captured.
Yeah. Because, believe it or not, I look at those when I go to type my notes. No, I need the information. It helps me, it helps the board. If ever anybody has a question who said something, I can go get it.
I would love for that chat log, essentially, to be included in the same way that emails are included, as a, as a part at the end of it.
Wow.
Yeah.
I keep worrying the word is.
It's the exact same thing.
I understand it's the exact same thing. Your minutes, let me just point out to the world, are average eight to 10 pages, which is a nightmare. I'm adding now, there's going to be conversations, I'm going to add three, four, five. The pages are going to be insane.
Can we talk about the administrative aspects of it, also relative to the number of meetings that there are, and the length of meetings, and also what really is, if you could also feature just really what's required of minutes, because they're transactional oriented as well?
Our minutes, and I've said this for yours, and the former mayor, who even said, agreed with me, and I'm saying it now. Our minutes are huge. We record more than we need to. Really, only thing that needs to be recorded is motions and segments. I tried to give a little flavor, or a little more, depending on the agenda item, because, you know, I fear if it's a hot topic, we want a little bit more in there, try to cover everybody's bases. So our minutes end up huge, which take time and editing, which can cause delays, I think.
Hours.
When you're averaging at least 25 to 30 worst times, 15 days a year, that's, let me think, seven to eight hours putting meeting minutes together. It's not even looking at editing.
And that's in addition to all the other duties that go on in the office as well.
So we're continuing on this vein. I need to find a way to shorten it.
Well, and also frankly, we have videos online. In other words, there's other ways for people to go back and like, you know, gee, I missed that, or, you know, I'm going to go back and watch what happened. You know, we have other ways of retrieving this material for people.
So I want to go back. There's a part I just don't get. So it's an incredible amount of effort to type all these up. Definitely agree. So then, then you finish writing the document, and you're then going to attach all the things that people emailed in and said they'd like this into the record. So you're essentially dragging an email into the thing, you're probably saving it as an image or something, and pasting it into a document. How are you actually doing?
I'm combining PDFs.
Okay, so you're taking a PDF, and you're adding files to it?
Correct.
Okay. So adding the chat log is really no more incremental effort?
No more. I actually agree with you with that. I'm just saying your minutes are becoming well more than they need to be.
Yeah. And to be clear, the only chats that are recorded are the ones between the people and the village. If there are private chats happening, that's not.
The private chats I'm copying and putting into the record. The Q and A, I'm, you want me to add to the minutes is what I'm.
No, what I mean on private chats is between Dave Marshall and Dave Ferris.
Correct. That's the one I'm saying. I'm just putting into the record.
Those, those shouldn't be, shouldn't be included in a record.
Well, that was my plan as tonight, because that just came on.
Yeah.
Because that way, at every aspect, in case there was something in the chat that was to the board or something, that way it was recorded. The Q and A, I agree, should be pinned. I don't agree, but I, if the board require a request, I will add it to the minutes. That's fine. But, yes.
If I may, I just wanted to say thank you to Dorothea for all the effort on the minutes. I think that they've been wonderful. I think the PCBA minutes were wonderful when we had Marina, as well as with Linda. I don't object to that. I know they require a tremendous amount of effort, and you all do it very, very well. And, you know, I'm just, I agree with trustee Keating here, that we're just, I think the, you know, and go shorter if you want to. I think that, you know, that's, you've got great discretion on doing that, so I trust you to do that fully. And I think it should be a summary, and it seems like that's what you're going for. So go to it. Um, and, and I think it should be a summary and, and it seems like that's what you're going for. So, um, go to it. You do a great job, um, as far as I'm concerned. Um, you know, and I, I would just say, uh, I, I'm just looking for the raw data that's included with the files, as trustee Keating is saying.
That's fine. I can add that. I have no problem doing it. I'm just saying your minutes are becoming, they're unwillably. Let's just say it they are. Um, and that's, it delays it. So we're, we're gotta find a way to cut it down. And now that we have the video aspect, it really.
That helps.
To me, it helps tremendous because if somebody before you really would have to go to our audio, now you can really watch a meeting in action afterwards.
Yeah, or you miss something that's in the meeting as well.
Right. You really can see it.
Yeah, I, I do that actually quite a bit.
As I said, it's the course interpretation of the meeting and I'm not biased, but.
Yeah.
It is my interpretation.
Yep. Yes, our, I.
There's a question for Dorothea and work for format wise, and this might help, I don't know, but is the chat between, say, myself and David, different than the Q and A to the board when you receive it through Zoom?
Yes. The chat is, the chat is certainly not functioning right and that's one of the reasons why, but.
But, but there are some of these things, so maybe the whole thing, this is my, like, well, truncate this thing because the important link is the public comment to the board and the board.
Which is the Q and A.
Correct.
So, uh, maybe the whole, the loading here is, is it important for you to see mine and David's?
No, it isn't, but what goes on in chat, since it's part of the meeting, and I tend to put anything related to a meeting into the meeting file.
No, I appreciate it.
Because everything gets foiled at some point in time. And if you're a clerk, you get very paranoid over anything that happens. So I put everything into a.
Yeah.
So you're being thorough.
Yeah.
There's.
And that's great. And I commend you for that. I was just thinking that if it's not helpful, then that makes, that's your, I mean, out of the small.
Understand that to me.
Not included, that might say he's trying.
No, that, no, that doesn't need to be attached to minutes. I agree with that. It's just something, if you're chatting on a public forum, in a public meeting or a fest.
With the Q and A.
When the Q and A, absolutely, it's part of the record. If that's what the board wants. The chat session, not part of the record, but will be kept because it is chat in a public meeting, in a public forum, at some point could be.
So along this, maybe that's something the public should know, all of this, because they might, you know, they might not want, you know, that communication.
I, I, we can.
I've been talking to a lot of family up here in my chat.
Well, I would suggest if you did that, it wasn't really smart because you're a public man. But, but I agree with you. They should understand. There's no, there's no sense of privacy with using this chat.
That's what I'm saying. They're coming and they're agreeing.
And, and frankly, there shouldn't be an expectation of privacy because you, you have, you have zoomed in to a publicly noticed meeting. So, I, I mean, I'm just sitting there thinking, and, you know, you, you have legal background. I mean, the expectation of privacy, I don't think is there.
You, wait a minute. You made a comment today, I'll be for.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, for the sake of this ability to protect themselves, it's no challenge, you know? That's a thought.
No, we can.
Appreciate it.
We can make that comment. It can be added to our guidelines.
Okay, any other thoughts here? I mean, I, I like the town, the, you know, the town idea because it's a solid one. And then I do like the idea too, that it's, it's similar, you know? Everybody kind of gets it, whether you're from the town or the village, you know?
So what actions would the board like to do? Do they?
Whittle this down to a, uh, cause we've got 19 policies in here. Just get it down to the one so that we can react. Edit it and react to it.
Were you talking about the, the town one? Is that what you're?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't.
Get it into the next meeting.
Yeah, why don't we, do you wanna, let's revisit that, whittle it down, bring it back. You know, we'll, we'll circulate with you guys. How about that?
Cause I think we have agreement.
Yeah.
We don't wanna rehash.
Yeah.
So just if the next meeting.
I mean, the town invented a good wheel.
Yeah.
We don't need to do it.
Yeah, I agree with.
So we'll kind of scrap some of the things we don't like with the current policy, add what we like with the town policy, come up with a hybrid. There's that word again. And then the board can look at adopting.
Yeah, and then we'll just, you know, do it right up front next week. Yeah, right? You know?
Yep.
I think we're not saying, didn't someone just suggest we're gonna use the towns, which is already laid out?
Yeah.
Rather than a hybrid. That's what you were saying.
Well, I was, I wasn't sure if there were some things that you actually liked with the old policy.
Well, there are guidelines for just, you know, decorum in a meeting that I think, you know, I think that's pretty standard stuff that we should.
I'm fond of everybody being nice.
Yeah, playing nice is good. Being a good neighbor.
Respectful people. Yeah, I like the respectful part. I think that.
Yeah.
It's something that should never be lost.
Dorothy, okay, if we can pull that together, we'll, we'll float it to the board. We're all good?
Good.
Okay, so.
I won't promise tomorrow, but I will try by Monday.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get it going. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
And thanks, thanks, everybody too. I think this was really a helpful, helpful discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I don't wanna, I had public comments from written in and we had the computer. So let me do Peggy Caravillas real quick. Her comments regarding the public comment issues, simply don't understand why there's such controversy over letting the public speak in an early meeting. Now, former reference and rules adopted, when she was a trustee, I recall that those rules were the purpose of public speaking and public hearings at a time. And it was felt that meetings could get out of hand fairly quickly. Frankly, having the clerk in an, or attorney letter to the board seems that the major goal is sufficiently holding meetings and somehow the public comments get in the way. Please come up with procedures and encourage the public at the beginning and end of meetings, at very least.
I want to address something in there. Um, I don't hear any controversy here. I hear five people in pretty much a green room. So I, I don't know where an idea that, that we're not in agreement is coming from.
If I may, I, I think that the, the comment that you're reading was from before the meeting and, and so I think that it was, it was an independent evaluation of the material and, and I, I don't really, uh, I don't have any comments on that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And then G P S said, some have suggested that previous adjustments to the puzzle were brought, bro, sorry, I'm not reading it right. Were brought about by specific events. Well, I think we need to acknowledge that the current need for adjustment motivated in part by transition to hybrid online meetings, which has boosted participation significantly. Which is true. We had a lot more public comments coming in.
Way up.
And posts and.
It didn't further advantage, cause we didn't know.
Yeah, and that's probably why I do like they'd be nice per, because we had comments come through that I refuse to read.
Oh, um.
And I'm gonna.
Horrible. Yeah, really. Actually, like me. Um, any, anything else down there?
I think I'm caught up with all the public comments.
Okay. Okay, great. So we kind of have an action item here. We're good folks. All right, we're gonna move on. Uh, why don't we?
Can we take five before the next?
Yeah, yeah, right. You know, you're always gonna suggesting that. I appreciate that. I kind of keep going. Okay, I make a motion that we adjourn for five minutes.
I second.
Five minutes. What time you want to come back?
Five's good. We don't, cause the other ones.
Five's like a stretch enough, yeah.
Yeah, just a little stretch.
Eight fifty.
Okay, okay, we're good? Everybody? Okay.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, aye, yeah.
Yeah, aye, aye, aye. Meetings called to order. Okay. Our next item in the workshop is, um, the marijuana legislation. And here we are again. But I mean, we really have to keep up with this because we have to be making some decisions here. Um, and I know last time, just to kind of kick it off, you know, um, no matter what it's here, we know that. So it's just how do we manage this? Do we, uh, not have the lounges and opt out and make some more decisions down the road? That came up, I believe. Some, some folks thought about that. Um, we allow the, um, retail sale. Um, you know, do we sort of hybrid, you know, stay opted in on one and maybe opt out on another? I mean, I'm just trying to recap. I think where we kind of were the last time. Um, and you have in your packet, you know, the information as well. So, um, I, you know, I welcome any thoughts from the board in terms of, you know, we all had time to think about it and maybe what's the best way to proceed.
Yeah.
And I've had conversations also with, you know, other, um, you know, officials in other communities.
I did take a look at some, at the tax side of things, cause I was most interested in the revenue. And so I, I did a deep dive on that and here's what I learned. And, and I don't know if this is entirely right, but this is how I understand it today. Jeff and I had a couple of talks. We, yeah. Obviously, if you opt in, I'm sorry, if you opt out, you will receive no tax revenue. There is no tax revenue that comes directly from the state or the county. The only tax revenue that would come is a four percent, is part of a 4% local municipality tax. So the scenario that we had talked about earlier, well, what if we allow these things, one doesn't get built here, one doesn't open here? Would we still get any money? And the answer is a clear no. Uh, we would get money indirectly, you know, from the state needing for roads or whatever. But, but nothing direct would come in. Now, it gets a little fuzzy between the town and the village. So if we, if we opt out of one and one opens in Pittsburgh Plaza, we still get no revenue. If we opt in, one doesn't get built in the village, but one opens in Pittsburgh Plaza, there is a revenue sharing agreement. And so that is worth exploring a little bit.
Because we're in the town or is a revenue sharing?
Because we stayed opted in.
Between the town and the village.
Right.
But the town and the village, and you said local revenue. That's what I was trying to get to get.
Yeah.
What, what does that mean? Is that Monroe County? Local means?
Just municipality.
Town and village.
Town and village.
Town and.
Town and village. It's town and village.
So it's a 4% tax.
It's not county.
No, not just village.
Correct.
It would be, okay, gotcha.
Yep.
And what portion of that 4% would be tickled into us?
That's what we have to negotiate with the pilots.
Okay.
But if, if it's 4%, statewide, and then Monroe County get a certain portion and then.
It's not 4% statewide. It's 20% statewide and four of that 20 goes to the town. 16 of it goes to the state.
Okay, so 4% doesn't go to Monroe County?
No. Monroe County would get a cut of the 16.
So what Dan is saying is the 4% he is talking about is what's the remainder that's left, right, for the potential distribution to our community in some fashion between us and the town.
If we allow it and one doesn't open here. Now, if we allow it and one does open here, it's the reverse.
Yeah.
So we would, we would get that tax revenue and have to share it with the town. The more likely scenario is probably Pittsburgh Plaza.
Oh, I.
But who knows?
And it's the same for dispensaries and.
Lounge, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Jonathan.
My, my understanding of this may not be perfect either. I, I under, based on the, the slides, uh, from NICOM and the presentations from NICOM, my understanding, it says here, um, there's 4% local tax, uh, and then the county would get that, uh, 3%, 1% would go to the county in which the sale occurs.
Oh.
And 3% is given to the city, village or town, which the sale occurs.
Oh, it is still out of the four.
There's a, there's a, a special, um, uh, contingency for that if your village is in a town, which ours is.
Yeah.
So then in that case, if your town permits it, then the 3%, absent of a, an explicit agreement by default, the 3% is split evenly.
Yeah.
Between the town and the village, um, even for a sale that's in the village.
Exactly.
So to me, this is actually biased against villages in our scenario.
And that, that came out at the NICOM conference as well, that it really, um, supported town, uh.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's not in our advantage particularly.
And, and there is, you're absolutely right. And there's also a very real scenario or a very plausible scenario that one opens in the town, doesn't open in the village, and we get a cut of the revenue.
Only if we're opted in.
If we're opted in.
Now, does that mean opting into both? Cause this is where it gets tricky. When, if you've opted in to, say, only dispensaries and a lounge opens.
Right.
Um, is it opt in and opt in? Or are there divisions within that opting in?
No, no.
Okay. That's where it gets tricky to me and I couldn't find the answer.
It is so labyrinthine. Uh, that's the only way I can describe it. And, um, these slides, yeah, these were April, right? So they, there may even be additional updates because.
When I put the packet together, I did go on NICOM to see if there was any additional on marijuana, cause I know I keep hitting you with the same information and I always wanna get to whatever more current. It's the same stuff.
It's the same. See, so they don't.
Unless they unroll something new when we get to NICOM.
Because I know at one point they were gonna try to set up, cause everybody, when, you know, when you just went through with the percentage and then, you know, if it's Tuesday, then you get more, you know? It's just, and, um, at one point, NICOM was gonna come up with sort of an algorithm for the villages to kind of work their way through what the potential revenue stream could be. But we haven't seen anything. I mean, they'd be, cause everybody just sat there and went, what? You know, how do we even understand what we could potentially get? So, um, we need more information on this in terms of strictly from a financial standpoint, what, what the consequences would be for the revenue stream.
You're talking about 1% and that 1% could translate to a thousand dollars a year. And then we have to say, well, a thousand dollars a year, is that worth what may turn into, um, what is it? Building inspector, more time in the building inspector to review thing. There's a lot involved here. I'm hoping that we will consider a, a very cautious approach, uh, and take our time, just like we did for two years with our code. Uh, and plan for this very carefully and maybe let another municipality go first and see how it works out for them. Because we can, we can reintroduce this at any time. We're, we're not penalized. We're not, we're not acting at this time.
Well, you know, it's interesting. I, 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 I hear you and I actually agree with, with what you're saying, but I had a conversation with somebody in an adjacent community and they said, we're all in because anybody who opts out, we will get our businesses up and running and established and get a customer base. You know, I mean, it, it's very interesting how each community is really taking an approach, cause they're like, it's here. We just want the revenue stream. We're good. Um, and I don't know from, in terms of the business climate, and maybe you guys have some thoughts too, you know? Um, I think we have to look at, at a larger model of what this means, you know, to just.
I, I'd like to address that really quickly. Um, the data's already there. I, I don't, I don't subscribe to the idea that we have to let other municipalities figure this out. They've been doing this in Massachusetts, Colorado, Oregon, California, Washington. Those are just for years. Um, the data's there if we want it. It's not a brand new idea.
Yes.
Or relate to the party.
I don't know that it's there for a village of our size that has residences, residences so, so close to, to our, our business district. I don't know that. So I, I'd like a lot more information and, um, research and opportunity to do that before I would feel comfortable making that decision. Cause we, we are just such a tiny community. Um, is there a possibility that we could invite, um, anyone in the audience to speak, if they're sitting?
Yeah, I've, I've acknowledged it, but I know Renee, Renee had something. Yeah, so it's, it's all interactive. Yes, indeedy.
Um, it, the only way we can, I don't feel like, I, I think this is a really important decision for our community and I really like the idea of a referendum. Because it will validate, it will allow everyone an opportunity to, to, to vote on the matter. I feel very uncomfortable making a decision from this place unless I was able to canvas, um, the neighborhood, the entire, um, you know, village and get some candid answers. A vote is a legitimate, um, you know, uh, voice from, from the community.
For sure.
So the only way, as I understand the law, um, that we can have a referendum is to opt out, opt out of one, one of them. We don't have to opt out of votes.
Yeah, that's where, where we had the discussion before.
Uh, and by village law, we can by our own motion call for a referendum. It doesn't have to be like a, a public call to referendum or whatever. So when we, uh, if we, I'm just trying to get the, the process in place. Um, so we, we have to opt out, write a law to opt out. And then, and then in the same motion.
Right, exactly.
Call for a referendum. And we, I mean, that's our most pressing thing, cause actually we have a million answer, or questions that we're not gonna have answered. And the New York State's establishing their authority to manage this.
They're still figuring stuff out.
Yeah, and I think, I, I don't feel comfortable making this decision without a public.
But I understand also, and I know Dorothy, I can speak to this, once we decide on the referendum, we have a window. And, and we have to make sure we really understand that and we're prepared.
Correct.
To, to deal with that. I'm, I'm just saying, you know, there's, it's, I, I'm hearing you and I think that's important. But there's a whole other logistical side to this that is a specific timeframe required under New York state law.
Yeah, we've got 45, no, we've got 30 days.
30, yeah. So it's like, whoa, clocked up, you know? So we have to kind of be ready and, you know?
There's a complication on the referendum. I totally agree with what you're saying. I, full agreement. There's a problem. And here's the problem as I understand it. If you, you can only do a referendum on the thing you opted out about.
Right, so you can't opt, do it in two phases? Like he was, uh, Jeff was saying, you could write it in a way that you can. Like he was, Jeff was saying, you could write it in a way that you could almost have two parts, the referendum, to know whether people are opting, want us to opt out entirely, or not opt out entirely, or opt out for one or the other? Is there no way to do that?
When I talked to him this week, he seemed to think there was no way to do that.
I think he had to research it, he wasn't quite sure.
So the, the scenario, as he explained it to me, was if we opted out of the lounges, and allowed the dispensaries, we could write a referendum on the lounges. We could not write a referendum on the thing that we had opted into.
Right.
And, and that sounds strange to me.
Well, the problem is, we won't know, are people voting on, they're voting yes because they agree with the opting out of lounges, or are they voting yes because they don't want us to, you know?
If we, if we stay opted in, we've taken that away from the public, you know, in terms of a referendum, because we have made that decision, whether we polled the public, you know, whether we do, what is the, the app that we were all looking at, you know, Instagram footer?
Yeah, from planning.
Yeah, you know, so it just depends how we, how we sort of want to look at that, you know, for the two pieces of it.
Yeah.
Because lounges are different than retail, for sure, you know?
Right.
And that was a big part of the discussion last time.
So that's the problem with the referendum, you say, we're opting out, and is someone voting no because they want us to opt into dispensaries but not lounges? You don't know, because we can't write the law that way.
But we could word the referendum properly, so that was clear.
That can be written.
That I'm not worried about.
That's what they're talking about.
Yeah, no, that can be totally clarified.
What, what I'm worried about is that you can't do a referendum on the dispensaries unless you opt out of them.
Like, we would have to opt out of everything and go for a referendum on everything, that's what, that's my takeaway.
But then you can write it, so that you could find out whether people are for or against dispensaries, and for or against onsite consumption. Okay.
Right, right, yeah, I, I think it's, we've got to have a law in place to opt out, and then those are automatically subject to a permissive referendum, each one would be.
Yeah.
So there'd be, you know, a vote group, one, one form of opting out, you know, that's my understanding.
That's my, that's what Jeff said last time, and that's what I wanted, okay. So what, how is that complicated? Tell me more, you said that it's complicated.
It takes away the perfect scenario.
What is the perfect scenario?
The perfect scenario was, we get public input on these things without having to opt out.
Yes.
Because we, because the law very clearly says you can't opt back in.
Right.
Well, I, I certainly think we should start all kinds of ways to get public input, not, it doesn't have to just be a referendum, because part of that includes, you know, educating, discussion, you know, everything we're talking about earlier tonight, you know?
The deadline is December 15th, when is it?
Yeah, Dorothy, nine.
Right, December 31st, I want to clarify, and you've got that backwards, you can't opt back in, you can never, if you don't opt out, you can't opt out.
If you don't opt out, you can't opt out.
If you opt in, you can't opt back out.
Correct.
Once you're opted in, it's forever.
Forever, but if you opt out, you can always opt back in.
Yeah, anytime. It, it, it's sort of counterintuitive, but that's, they, they set it up.
So if we pass a local law saying, we're, we're going to opt out, and then?
We opt out and go to referendum.
Yep, we go to referendum, and then the public says?
We want to stay opted out, or we want to all opt in, or whatever?
We want to opt in, and then that, that automatically makes it, so we are letting the public decide, even though it's starting from a negative.
It's, it's, that's what I'm saying, it's almost counterintuitive in terms of discussing.
So that's the only way we can put it to a public vote.
Right, right, yeah. Art, I know you, I saw you were?
I'm trying to know.
No, we, go ahead.
Suggestion, I, I have a few complex ideas, I know fairly well about it, but I think the next step might be for the civil board and the public, if you're going to have another work session, prior to that work session, you work on the matrix with all of what you said there, opt in, opt out, and you have your little, you know, all the diagrams there, number one. Number two, if there is data intact out there, take the data, throw that into the algorithms, the huge caveat, this is Massachusetts, Vermont, you know, Connecticut, wherever, but then extrapolate that and bring it to the village scenario. That's two suggestions as a starting point for both your review and consideration, as well as the public's input, because obviously, even if I, you know, what I, but gets a first start for the public's image point, simple matrix, and the algorithm, but, you know, an example scenario based on the algorithms that you are, the algorithm, the data that's already out there, that's my suggestion.
Yeah, I think we were looking at a, a, something in the beginning of October, that came up for discussion.
Correct, well, just, the deadline is December 30th?
Yeah.
But we have, we have to back it up.
If you're going to opt out, you have, the special election has to be held not less than 10 days, and no more than 60 days. So your perfect scenario, you would be having, if you waited till December, you'd be looking at a referendum vote in January, February.
So if we're backing out of that, of our deadline, when do we need to pass a local law if we're trying to have our referendum?
Obviously, you're not going to want to do it on December 31st, on NICOM. I would suggest your first meeting in December to make that decision.
And I think that was part of our discussion, one of our earlier meetings, our timeline.
So you would want to?
Well, but law has to age.
You need to, yeah, okay, you need to do that in November, so I'd set, I'd set your public hearing, like, first meeting in November.
Yeah.
Or December, and then that would be the timeline.
And I think, you know what, we, we need to do this, we, we need to pull together that timeline, because I think that's so crucial for us to make sure we're hitting those, those benchmarks.
So do I need that, that's the deadline?
Yeah, yeah, because, you know?
Because November and December get tricky for the board, because you have one meeting in November, you have one, you can have more, you always do. But you can have one meeting in November and one meeting in December, you're also dealing with holidays.
Yeah, so we really have to kind of?
Not going to be as engaged as maybe they would be.
Yes.
Which is probably a good thing if your referendum is in January or February, because then, you know, the holiday.
Or on the other side of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's one thing I want to talk about in regards to the, if we opted out, okay, so if we opted out, our idea would be to put it to a referendum, which would be great, then we'd get public input. I would want us to have some guidance at that time of, you know, if you guys decided to do this, this is what we were thinking, that it would be allowed in these areas and not allowed in those areas. Because I, I don't think a, a purely black and white yes or no is what we're looking for, it's got to be a thoughtful yes or no. It makes sense here, or it doesn't make sense here.
And you brought that up last time, and I thought you really made some good points with that, that we should really be, you know, putting, putting it more of a package together.
Yeah.
So they can make, so the voters can make it for, if we choose to do a referendum?
Well, I mean, essentially, I mean, I'm thinking, I mean, although now we're sort of all virtual, but almost, you know, like a, a public charade, or, you know, where we really talk through, what does this look like in our community if we're going to do this? You know, or not, you know, so, yeah, Bob, and then?
My question was exactly that. What's, what, how much, how much discretion are you allowed to regulate the size for dispensary hours? My experience is in Las Vegas, in Henderson, Nevada, where they've had this for three or four years, they're basically big box, the dispensaries and the lounges are kind of on a big box format. I would be concerned about that for a couple of reasons. Number one, the footprint of retail is something that, you know, in, in terms of walkable communities, you want to restrict, and my question is, would you be able to do that with those types of businesses? Second thing is, in our village, the hallmark of this village is that residential neighborhoods and what commercial are still livable. And I think there's a lot of questions about the environmental impacts of these businesses, what they would be. What I've observed in Vegas is if you go to any commercial district or a shopping plaza, and Vegas is really a big shopping, it's not semi-urban like the villages, but there's a lingering smell of marijuana that just pervades the whole shopping plaza where the dispensary or the lounges. That would have an impact here, and if you lived on, say, Lincoln Avenue where your house or what's commercial property, that would be a terrible nuisance for, for people like me, it's an irritating smell, some people are even allergic to it. I think that's something that, especially because we are semi-urban, there's impacts, and my fear from what I saw initially, the ground of the state law, is it's targeting, you know, suburban towns, like, that had reached with rural, the issues are very different here. So I think a fairly thorough study of how much we could regulate it, what those regulations would look like, and what the impacts would be is necessary. And I think I agree with, and remember, with stress these set, but that should be sort of ready for the public information, so that the public has something tangible to grasp, to understand, you know, what would the real impact be here in a rural village like this in terms of aesthetics, in terms of impact and quality of life, and in terms of the character of the retail business.
Dispensaries do not have over problems, lounges do, dispensaries are selling packaged, sealed items, someone's wrong.
And, and what I've seen is that in Vegas, though, people tend to hang outside, you know, unless there's restrictions.
And they're allowed to smoke publicly.
Right.
Yeah, see, and, and that's something that we, we definitely can regulate, I, I asked NICOM that question, that can be regulated just the way, you know, we don't have open alcohol consumption in the streets. In other words, it, it is, we, we have total control over that, and I think that you really raise a good point with that.
It would be enforcement, because we can't get enforced traffic speeds, how are we going to enforce that someone's not smoking a bottle or a can? It's something to be concerned.
Of course it is.
It's going to be legal.
Well, yeah, personal consumption is already legal anyway, all, any, after, you know, yeah, that's, that's here, that's here.
No, 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 but I mean, in the public street or on the sidewalk and bar, you can do that.
You can do that.
You can smoke a cigarette on the sidewalk, you can smoke a drone on the sidewalk.
And so that might be something we would look at, how do we address that?
And if it's a?
Not relative to cigarettes, but relative to public, to alcohol consumption, treating it in that manner.
I see.
That, that's, that's the discussion I've had with NICOM.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you all have points.
Good analogy, at least, with alcohol, because you don't, you can't drink to the side.
No.
Right, why would you want?
Yeah, exactly, so, you know, but, but I, those are really, really solid points, because that's something that, obviously, it's, it's, it's here in one respect, and it's, what do we do with the rest of this, and how does this really affect the community just holistically, you know, as, as a village? Yeah, I know, Dave, you had?
Dave Marshall, 67, definitely. I just wanted to commend the board's thoughtfulness on this and recognition that it is a very big decision, and the input of the public is probably more tenement than anything here in terms of moving forward, and how to incorporate that in your decision-making capacity. And I think it is disappointing that a referendum can only occur if you opt out. It would be nice if they could give you an ability to do it in advance, in some capacity or another, without the, what is it, normal reference like how? But in order to arrive at that or recognize that they require an opt-out, that being said, I completely compared, Dan, to your thoughts and sentiments, and vibe of your comments as well. The idea that it'd be nice to know if we do opt in, whether or not a beef or dispensary or onsite smoking, you know, where are the sports spots in that? Like, what are they thinking about, right? In terms of how that might be zoned or how it might be regulated, so that when people do say, yeah, sure, let's have dispensaries, what does that mean? So if I vote to opt in, because I'm all for marijuana legalization, but I just want to be thoughtful about how it comes into the community. And, you know, we're talking to some other municipal elected officials, they've talked about both dispensaries and onsite smoking, and I'll say, well, where are you going to put it? Well, they, they say that they're going to put it into light industrial, right, similar to a, a Canadian valet, right? They're going to put it in spots away from the general residential communities. And to me, we don't really have that. Like, we can't just say, okay, don't hit light industrial, doesn't work like that, right? To Bob's comment, there's, the, the tight knit residential community and how it's possibly commercialized is very important, and for residents to have that understanding as to how a community is going to be in is really important, I, I think, so that referendum.
One of the things that we had talked about, thank you, Dave, was the pickle factory and the Talbets area, and possibly the, the office park.
Office parks, you know, something away.
I love the idea of thinking about what that might be, but I also want to think about what's the second derivative of that. The pickle factory is a very unique opportunity for redevelopment, right? A very unique opportunity for high-density residential communities and living in the village, that we might not otherwise have a place easily permitted outside of, perhaps, 75 and Row and other areas.
Yeah.
But like, you think about redevelopment of communities, redevelopment of Talbets, how does that area incorporate into what might occur within 75 and Row, and the lineage between the two streets crossing Monroe, and the similarities between them? So when we think about marijuana, where it might go, dispensary or onsite smoking, how does that decision affect those redevelopment possibilities that could have transformative opportunities for higher residential living, rather than, that's just where we put marijuana?
Yeah, and, and you're right, because the pickle factory's always been sort of, you know, ripe for that, there's always been a lot of discussion about that, or about it becoming mixed use, or, you know, how do we look at that, because it really is?
It's a gem, just a way, I mean, no disrespect to the current environment, but the opportunities are about, whether or not it being a pickle factor, Talbets, Talbets area. And to just simply say, that's the area that nobody quote-unquote sees much of, so let's put marijuana there, I think it dismisses the opportunities five to 10 years from now.
But see, I think, I think the good news is, is that this is a workshop, and we're discussing this, so this is, this is what we want, you know? Throw out the idea, well, I don't know, you know, this is, this is why we have the workshop.
Yep.
So, so we appreciate everybody's input, because this is where we're at, and we'll expand it to the rest of the community as well, so?
And I think your thoughts and sentiments here are, are very well said, the ideas of thinking about referendums in public, I really commend.
So in terms of us moving forward, okay, so, I mean, I think we kind of have, you know, we, we realize we've got some moving parts here.
No, you're saying that we would need to pass a local law, or not have, we'd have to, we have to, the steps in the aging versus once you have a, you have a law.
So you would need to have your final local law five days prior, so I'd say, one prior to your November meeting.
Okay.
And then you need 30 days anyway. By the time you post everything, get everything legalized for the, for the adoption of a local law, you have your, see, and I'm, you know, you can call it special meetings, I'm trying to deal with your current set meetings. Your first meeting in December, have your public hearing on the local law, then you would, from there, if it was approved and you opted out, then you had to hold your referendum, no sooner than 10 days, but no later than 60.
So 60, so we would have to?
We could push it out.
This point about the time, if we decide to have a referendum, the time to get the materials together to educate people, we'd have a little, little time.
We have a little time.
The deadline is, is, that's looming, is really deciding whether we're going to?
Opt in?
Opt in, or opt out, because we're automatically opted in.
Yeah, right now, we're all opted in, just so we're all clear, okay?
You do nothing, accomplished, done.
But in order to get the community's input, which it sounds like a lot of us find great value in?
You're going to want to opt out.
We would opt out and motion to have our own referendum, or, I mean, to have a referendum.
And be part of two resolutions.
Right.
Yeah. Two separate resolutions.
Yep, I got that part, I was just trying to talk through, so we'll have time to get together the data for the education piece, we've got up to, to, you know, once we, we age that law and get that law written, because we've made a decision, we are going to have, if, you know, if we've decided that's what we're going to do, our real deadline is five days, like, the end, or the mid, mid-October is when we need to be really putting the law together, if that's what we?
Well, have that sample law, so that will go together quite quickly, it's just a matter of getting the data pulled in, so?
Yeah, to be clear about this, I want to go a little bit farther than that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm in total agreement with you. I'm asking this board that whenever we talk about opting out, there's a second part of the sentence which is about the referendum. I don't want to make any public statement, any kind of thing, it should always be, we're doing this so that we can do a referendum, this is the only way we could do a referendum. I don't want it to be, we opted out, period, end of story.
Yeah, but that, that goes back to educating the public, because, again, it's so counterintuitive how this was set up, so, it's like, what do you mean you're opting out? Well, now we're opting out so we can opt back in, what do you mean, you know, how do you opt, what, you know, it's, so, we, the educational piece, I think, has to start What, you know, it's, so, we, the educational piece, I think, has to start a little sooner than later.
Okay.
You know, on that. And I do like your idea of the, what was that, the, the grid?
The matrix.
The matrix, thank you. I think that'd be kind of a cool way to do it, to show people, you know, because again, the moving parts of this.
I think analysis based on the data, the algorithm, my species, what was raised about, these are the potentially areas initially we're thinking about. But it's not village-wide, it's not adjacent to residential neighborhoods. If that's the case, then we're all points there, I suppose.
The, the other thing that I think we're all in agreement on, and I just want to be sure of that, is we were, we were all pretty firm about lounges, right? Until, until we see what these things are and how they work.
Well, what if the public says, we want them based on the referendum, then that-
Then that's what the public wants.
Right.
Okay, but, but yes, and if we're kind of putting the, the frame around what this might look like in our village, are we doing what it might look like for lounges and what it might look like for dispensaries?
Your point, I guess we have to.
I think we should take a look at all of it. I think it's only fair to, to like, sort of fully vet this with everybody, you know? Then why would we pick one over the other? I mean, this is what-
Because one of them is, is majorly impactful on a neighborhood, and we accept the type thing. And the other one is completely not.
But to finish my thought, because of that, we should present all of it. So people really do understand that maybe one is more impactful than the other. I mean, I don't, you know, I think we just need to opt out of it all. I just, I see it as an educational element and, and really getting the community engaged on this.
Okay, so let me ask you the question then. I'm in total agreement, we're going to educate the public about what a lounge is. We're going to educate the public towards, about what are dispensaries and how it might affect the village. We say, so where would you want to put a lounge? That's going to be the next question for us.
Sure.
And we don't have an answer for that. Because I don't think anybody here thinks that's a good idea.
Right, but I'm just saying, we, okay, that's our opinion potentially, but we should talk to the public about it. Because again, the conversation we had earlier is, somebody might say, you know what? I have an idea about how this can be done. You know, I, I just think we should have at least allowed that discussion.
And onsite consumption doesn't necessarily mean smoking either, right?
Oh, that's true.
Onsite consumption could be other-
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how they deal with smoking.
I don't know.
I don't know, I don't get it.
Hang on, we're going to recognize somebody, that's fine.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, Art.
At your point, I think that's exactly what the continuation of another work session is.
Yeah.
So the agenda's put out there, the topic is out there, that they have some kind of supplemental documents from the state and whomever. That's exactly what goes out, whether it takes one, two, three, four work sessions.
Exactly.
That's what you're built on, to educate.
This is front-end work. This is an end-of-story work.
And the thoughts of the board, where we're thinking of, which would then be accommodated, so be the code change, zoning, etc. Because that's part of the ultimate thing. They're not only going for, do you want this in this area or not? But going, do you want this in this part of town? So, but that's all the education to the work sessions.
Exactly, right there with you. Thank you, yep.
Yeah, Lily, and just to repeat what we said earlier, I think it's critical that everyone, the public especially, understands that opting out is not permanent. Opting out can be changed to opting in at any time. But I think the more that, we're discussing this here, just in this little space of time in workshop, is becoming very clear, at least to me, that there's a lot of that, there are a lot of elements here and a lot of unknowns that we want to carefully examine before moving forward. This gives us the luxury, I think, of being able to examine each one of the, of the alternatives and what the impacts would be.
Well, did you?
I have.
Yeah.
Just a comment from Ted Hughes, Barbara. Regarding marijuana law, I wish to reiterate, sorry, I can't speak at this hour, but you're literally, that opting out gives the village a lot more flexibility in careful preparing and assessing the wisdom of allowing retail sales and consumption. I sincerely hope that you decide to go this route, and I believe that is in the best interest of the village residents. Please take whatever steps are necessary for correcting a resolution to allow them to opt in out.
Yeah.
Justin? I, I appreciate this discussion and the thoughtfulness that's, that's going into this. I also agree that opting out is the first step in listening to what people really want in these cases. I, I think that, to also echo some public comments, a lot of our success in the village is due to careful planning and zoning, given the close proximity of, of residents with businesses. And I, I think that the, you know, what, what we all seem to be saying here is that we want more public input. To me, and I'm just kind of throwing this out here for discussion, it seems like perhaps what's missing is, is that essentially we're being reactive to what the state says. The state is saying, you're opting in by default, and it gives the option of, of opting out with or without a mandatory referendum, always with a permissive referendum. I think that what's missing here is, is what's really gone into our planning and zoning is the, the zoning process, starting with a comprehensive plan, and then going to enacting legislation to set our zoning. You know, that's, that's really what, uh, uh, local, local government is, is doing. And I think that, just to toss this out there again, the problem to me with the referendum is that, you know, we're saying, hey, let's give people an idea of what we might do. Well, that's not the comprehensive planning process that leads to successful zoning. That process would be to say, let's give people all of the options. Let's have a charrette, let's have a comprehensive planning process, let's let them decide. And then based on that, we'll construct zoning. And if a part of that zoning is opting into, to one of these kinds of marijuana on the exact terms that people have said they want to, then we can do that. So I guess, you know, I'm just tossing this out there as another point of, of consideration. I feel like the, the referendum, whether it's a mandatory referendum that we, that we say will occur, or if it's just the default permissive referendum, I think that the timelines being imposed there are still reactionary, and they don't allow us to do the, the comprehensive planning process that led to our successful zoning.
Those are good points, but we have to opt out either way. Are you saying that you think we should opt out without a referendum? Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm, I'm throwing that out further, there for consideration, because I feel like the referendum doesn't answer the right questions. The, the real answer to the questions, I think, is doing our own process of, you know, we did this comprehensive plan and enacted zoning, and it's great. And, and that's what all local municipalities do. And, and this just, you know, even with the referendum, it still puts us in this position of being reactionary. And, you know, what, what kind of an idea are we going to give to people? We, we want to solicit ideas. So that, just, just tossing that out.
You know, I don't, I, I, I think that it's an excellent point. I do think that in some respects are not mutually exclusive, you know? Because the idea of reaching out to the public is always, we have the comp plan in mind. And so is it an amendment to our comp plan? Do we update it in some fashion? I see things happening possibly more concurrently rather than linear. And I think that's something that certainly our residents can handle, you know? I mean, I think, you know, we, it's, it's educational, it's how do we look at the entire, as I said earlier, holistically, how does this look holistically in our village? And really, that's what a comp plan is about, yes, Art.
Hold on, can I jump? I want to answer-
Calling both of those people together. I don't know if both of them are showing up, because it's a white lady. If I remember correctly, you know, I would just point one off, though, there's nothing lost, number one. That gives you the freedom to breathe, sit back. The board will look at, if we're trying to pursue this, what part of the village makes sense on the comprehensive plan issue? And then say it comes up, okay, no, then I'll get it to a point. You can say, yes, we still want to pursue this, but these are the areas that the town might consider resoning. You go through the process to do that, whether it takes six months, a year, two years, I'm just saying, now the board, let's just, let's say, the referendum. By year's time, then you decide, you might be back anywhere. Because my understanding is these, and I, we didn't look more than I and all this stuff, but my understanding is, when can a business actually operate? I thought it was like 18 months out.
It's even maybe a little bit longer than that, they're still trying to-
So where's the rush, so that then, go through the zoning, then you go through and say, zone. Now you go to the referendum.
We are in a different type of referendum. I know Dan wants to say something, and then I will speak to that. It becomes a different aspect of how we do that, so.
I, I want to go back to Justin's point. So I, I hear you, I, I just, we, we spent all this time doing the comp plan, and not every new decision has to go through an entire comp plan process. We can use the comp plan as a guide for the decisions that we make. Every new idea does not have to run through a whole huge process. That was the whole point of doing the comp plan. To Art's point, you said if we opt out, there's nothing lost. I totally disagree with that. The, if we opt out, our reputation of, is damaged. If we opt out without a referendum, or, so-
Can I ask you where and how our reputation is damaged and what happens? And then it goes back to, we don't even know what revenues we're getting.
Okay.
As far as like, we're losing-
You ask me a question, I'll answer it.
It's a three-part, I need to finish, but it's not a-
Oh, it's a three-part.
The third part is that, I think, I heard concerns we're going to lose out. Well, that's like saying, I'm a bookstore, I'm going to lose out, I'm not the first one in the village. It's like a farmer saying, I'm going to lose out, I'm not the first one in the village or a community. I don't think there's much to that.
As somebody who wrote a book on PR, I'm telling you, we would take a PR hit. Thank you.
And I disagree with you a hard, hard, whole hard way in there.
Sounds good. I just wanted to, I think that-
I'm sorry, were you, were you done?
Yeah.
Sorry, okay, okay. And then, and then I'll speak to the, how the, how the referendum would work.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I might be, I was going to talk about the referendum thing too. But I, in, in response to Mr. Pierce, there, there are two ways to a referendum.
Right.
One is that we declare a mandatory referendum. The other one is that when we pass these local, these two local laws, opt out of the two types of marijuana retail, they are automatically subject to a permissive referendum. So going to, what Mayor Plummer was saying, you know, the, the either or, you can opt out without a referendum, and if people really want a referendum, they can still get one by petition.
But a permissive referendum is a little more involved, and I, I'm not for or against, I just want to explain the process, because it's, it's a petition that is circulated, and there is a specific percentage of residents that must sign it to meet, to meet even a threshold of holding that referendum. So the pro, you know, it's still a referendum, but the process is, is different. And it's a little more, as I say, moving parts. Not that it can't be done, especially in this village, because I think this village is very, you know, it's very dynamic, it's very, you know, a lot of activity, a lot of engagement. Anyway, so with that being said, I mean, I do think, no matter what, we know we have benchmarks and timelines.
In October.
Yeah.
It happens.
And, you know, I certainly want to, I think we really should put something together, the educational piece. Let's at least start putting this really out there with, you know, the, the matrix or, you know, something to start really making sure the public understands there's, there's timeframes, there's consequences. What does opting in look like? What does opting out look like? What does that mean when we?
And, and there, I'm right with Peter in his first PR, that's what they think, just, just open forums, all the advanced communication that they're talking about tonight, and advanced workshops, then it self speaks for itself. You don't need marketing, my mind's a timing system for resume. That in itself speaks volume. I don't have to have a holding board marketing what you're doing. Actually speak on the news.
Okay, thanks.
That's what I'm saying, what you're doing is great.
Yeah, I mean, you know, yeah, this is how, how we-
Well, oh, sorry.
Do you want to read? I have a comment from the public.
Okay.
YB says, YB has anyone stuck in the referendum so you, so that you can listen to the public is a contradiction. I understand the desire to first form a cohesive plan to present to the public. By the referendum, it means to get the input from the public while forming that plan. I'm not sure whether the board would want to inhibit that.
Thank you, okay? Any other comment? I'm sorry, she's just on her own now.
She's just on her own.
Literally all.
That's it, I'm done.
Okay.
I, I think that another part of this formula that is important is that in the local zoning process that I was talking about, the decisions that we make in the comprehensive planning process that leads to our legislation is based on experiences. And we don't know, you know, we've, we've said we don't know how lounges are going to look. There, the state is forming a, a separate regulatory agency like the State Liquor Authority for marijuana.
They just set it up 10 days ago.
Okay, and I, you know, I have a study that I don't know what that's going to look like. And we don't know about the particularities of how that's going to lead to specific retail establishments. And I think that, you know, on the referendum timeline, we don't get to observe that. And, and not that we have to follow anything else, but I think that's just another point to, point to consider.
So what, you're saying on the referendum timeline, you're saying if we, on our own motion, call for a referendum, but a referendum is still possible even if we decide not to do that? So I, I understand what you're saying. The, the timing is terrible, it's not giving us time to, to plan appropriately or to have a charrette on where, how we could change our zoning and where it would be appropriated, like, it accelerates these things. We have to kind of, kind of, as soon as we know what the public thinks, if we decide to do a referendum, we need to kick into gear and have an open session about where, where people would envision it. And so that could inform our discussions about zoning. Because what wasn't, when we did the comprehensive plan, it wasn't-
Who knew?
So like, that wasn't even in our thinking. And I agree with you, you don't have to go back and-
But we also know where we, we put bars, caverns. You know, in other words, and, and I'd like to speak to the, I think it's called the Cannabis Control Board or something like that, that was just set up. It literally is just like the Alcohol Control Board, you know? It, it, what, what we're seeing now, really, in terms of how the systems are being set up at the state level, very much sort of how alcohol is regulated. So they're using that model, and I think that's really what we're just going to be seeing. So I don't think, you know, they're not inventing a whole bunch of wheels. It's just that they, you know, there's a few more moving parts, but it, it's going to be quite similar to that.
Okay, can we, I'm running out of gas. We're more than three hours after a long day. We've got a plan, we're going to do this again, we're going to, we've got a timeline.
Yeah, let's distribute the timeline. That's got to go out.
And we got more things to-
And we have an example of the, the law that we can, can start-
Yeah, and let's start looking at that, let's start pulling this together, we'll start putting together some type of a matrix. I'm going to ask for help on that. Yep, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, one last comment, please.
Just one question. Do we have any understanding yet as to the impact on traffic or parking apartments for dispensaries and what? You know, based on, you know, where they may be in Monroe County, how many there may be. At your point of PR, so you're the first, I remember what it was like to try to get a Krispy Kreme gun or a Chick-fil-A chicken sandwich. I didn't go, because it was the one parking one, right? So my question-
Yeah, that's why we talked about the pickle factory and Talbets and the other area. Because they would be high parking.
Right, but again, those are the-
And also to one of your point, the large dispensaries, we wouldn't even, those regional ones, we wouldn't even be-
We're, we're not even in the game on that, no.
But we don't have any data right now on what even the smaller dispensaries might have on parking.
We have all the data from Colorado to Washington, Oregon, California, et cetera, et cetera, Massachusetts. All the data in the world, all the data in the world exists on impact on dispensaries, if you want to go-
We don't have that. Somebody does, but we don't.
It, it's all out there.
It's out there, but we don't have it. We haven't looked at it as a gross part of it.
You're kind of starting to research this.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I see where you're going with that, yeah. No, 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 pulling it in.
We have a definitely pilot that's understanding impact on all residential communities.
Okay, I'm going to wrap it up. Okay, but thank, thank you. I think, I think we've had a good discussion, I appreciate, appreciate it with the group. Okay, so, last, last will be the retainer agreement from Mindy Zoglin, the Zoglin Group. You have that in your packet. This, uh, this was a request from the Planning and Zoning Board regarding the, oh, thanks so much, Art. Really good input, appreciate it. I might be calling you about the matrix thing.
It makes it sound like we're going to take the red pill early in the morning. It sounds way more exciting.
There's Neo, okay. All right, um, let's see, where was, oh, yeah. So anyway, the Planning and Zoning Board would like to respond, and maybe you can speak to some of this too, to the clearcutting project being proposed by the Canal Corporation. And there's soliciting comments relative to Seeker. And there's some issues associated with that. And we are an LWRP, and the Planning and Zoning Board has the purview over that. And we're also, I can just say, I've been in touch with the town. The town has shared a lot of their information, they've done tremendous legal work already. They actually did the, all of the foundation work for the original injunction that Seeker came from. That's why we're doing Seeker now. So the request was to expand legal counsel's role for that board to just help them with putting together the comments, working in tandem with the town. Is there anything you'd like to add?
But so moved, I mean, it was a pretty straightforward thing. $2,000, should put a cap on it, which is terrific, so it's not on 100%.
It may not even go up to that at all, I mean, because the town's doing-
Two thousand, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Hang on, excuse me, there's a comment.
Would you like to make a motion second, and we can have this session?
Yeah.
Either way, you want to do it is.
Motion to approve.
One second.
Okay, we have a second.
Now we can discuss.
Yeah, and discuss, okay, thank you.
I'd like a clarification, is there a portion of the village that is in danger of being clear cut?
Yeah, the, um, the discussion that I've had with Bill Smith and also through their attorney and also with a number of other people that are tracking this, is there is a 125-mile section in Western New York State that has been identified for clearcutting? And it stretches from Lockport to Lyons. And originally, it only included towns. So, you know, we really weren't part of that in, in the same way the last time when the injunction, injunction went out. Now, the proposed project includes the entire strip to be monitored and looked at for clearcutting.
Okay.
Yeah, so what includes the village?
And I don't think in the, within the village.
Pardon me?
Do we have any, what they're, because they're saying in bankland.
Yeah, so let's take, like, take for example down where, let's just start right down here where the canal amp in is, and let's go all the way down to Talbets, past Renee's yard. That would all be clear cut.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wanted to, to understand that part.
Yeah.
It's a good question.
Was there a reason why we wouldn't enjoin with the town?
We are enjoining with the town at, at some level, but we also, we're a village. We also have our own standing legally, in addition to the town. The town, as I said, is doing the heavy lifting. This would really be legal counsel, as I said, the request from the board to help just craft it relative to our village and our LWRP and what we're doing. So it's not, it, Mindy didn't think it would go even up to 2,000. I mean, you know, because really the town's done so much of the work. And evidently, the town attorney has a background in this, in environmental law, and has done just some outstanding briefs, so. And the town's very forthcoming with everything. They've already sent us information, and I believe some of it's been forwarded to you guys as well, so.
So we couldn't piggyback with them, my point? We have to hire our own environmental attorney or?
What this is about, this is, this is about the request for us to write our own comments back to the Canal Corporation that are due by October 15th, it was extended, everybody got the notice on that, for Seeker.
Okay.
So it.
So we do need our own, is the bottom?
Yeah, we, we should. I mean, it's coming from our board, our village, we have legal standing, the town does too. The town has provided us the entire copy of the comments they already put in. So we certainly can, you know, worth Smith off of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this will become part of our, our legal bills if any work is done in.
Yes, and, and I, and I also had Brooklyn, ask Brooklyn to go through our legal bills. Let's see, where are we here? Zoglin Group, we have budgeted for the year $34,200, and we're just about at $6,600. So we're well, you know, and I, we can, he went through all, we're, with every single law firm, we are well below.
Yeah, but through, um.
This is, this is right, this is as of.
Okay, but, but what have we received invoices for? That's, that's always the question.
As of eight-ten.
But, but as of eight-ten doesn't mean we got a July invoice, doesn't mean we got a June invoice, so.
I don't know, I mean, he did this quickly because of what came through. I mean, he was just trying to pull this together. Here, I can give this to you. I'd like to take a look. Excuse me.
No, quick, we do have a comment.
Yeah.
Okay. Peggy Caravara commented, let's see, regarding the retainment of the Zoglin Group, this expense is unnecessary regarding the hearing count, canal clearcut program. This is reaching too far outside the role of planning board when the village board can and should address the canal corporation activities with a legal budget so tightly constrained and monitored, it would be unwise to make this kind of expenditure by the planning board. Who knows what's coming down the pike as they say.
I couldn't disagree more. I think when we're dealing with Seeker, first of all, our planning and zoning board in our village, our planning and zoning board in our village is not just an, an interested party, they're an involved party and should be identified as such, and they have not. And that is going to be part, and parcel, I'm sure, of some of the comments going back. So I, I appreciate that input in the comments. I think what is at risk is, is tremendous. Can you imagine what our canal would look like in the village all clear cut? Think about it, seriously. I have, what, $2,000? That's where we're going? Up to 2,000, I mean, I just, you know, that was a number that Mindy just came up with, you know. I think this is important, I think this is a critical juncture. We have to respond. We are also trying to identify other LWRP communities all up throughout the 125-mile stretch to maybe form a coalition.
So she, she will be spearheading that, that part of the.
I don't know that she's spearheading something. This is a request, all this is, right now, right at this very moment, is a request from the Planning and Zoning Board. Because they believe, and have had this discussion, and I believe rightly so, that they are and not just an interested party in this, they are an involved party and should be responding aside from whatever we do, and we're putting together our comments, we've all talked about that, that's coming from our board as well. They should respond independently, they oversee the LWRP. I, I, I don't even see this as controversial. This is something we've all talked about, clearcutting and the impact that this would have on our community. Dave, did you want to weigh in with anything else?
Just simply that without legal opinion from Mindy, we would be blindly following the town. Or what I would even prefer, that we should be an involved party and have some jurisdiction in whether or not a CEO or a figure or the LWRP with regards to what the town or us and act in Mindy's involvement and her legal opinion and the work that she does to understand what the town is doing, how that coincides with what we may do and how it may affect us. Without that opinion and her expertise in that regard, we would be reasonably blind. And I think that would be inappropriate at a village level, given the importance of the canal to our residents.
Thank you, I think that was really well said, and I, I couldn't agree with you more. I think, I think this is really a defining moment. We, we have, we have to make a stand, you know, we really have to respond.
2,000 is small. If that's the cost of us feeling that as a planning board, we've done the most that we can. And without that legal opinion, we would not have that.
Thank you, yes, yeah, Justin.
As the liaison to the Planning and Zoning Board, I, I have to say that the, the meeting that I attended the other day related to the canal clearcutting, Attorney Zoglin was, was very well informed. I think that she will provide great guidance to that group, and I am looking forward to, to reading the recommendations. I, I also appreciate the public comments and Trustee Lanpier's comments helping us to make sure that we're keeping legal fees in check. I think that, you know, that is part of the, the future responsibilities of this board. That's, that's what we need, even when we've been in a meeting for, for an hour or whatever it is. Thank you for referring that night.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I, all the questions are good, but, you know, I think this is really, I feel very passionately about it, and I think a lot of us do too. I mean, I can't even imagine what you're thinking, oh my gosh, there goes your backyard. You know, this, this is really a defining moment for us, I think. You know, we, we, they're, they're full steam ahead on this, and we need to say, we need to say, protect our village, you know.
Yes, up, up until this point, I was not aware that we had any endangered, invasion within the village.
And I can understand that, because the last time it was only really going to affect the towns. Yeah, because that was the first question I asked.
It's changed, I mean, it's, it's changed from much broader brush and, so I totally under, understand.
Yeah, yeah. So there, there is a motion before us?[1747.11]